Okay, welcome everybody. Today is our weekly county commissioner meeting. Today is Monday, March 28th. This time, I would please ask everyone to rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Dave for leading the pledge. Everybody get a chance to see the agenda. Any additions or corrections? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make motion to approve today's agenda as it stands.
Second.
Who did second in all favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries. We'll go right on down our agenda. Today's bill paying day. This is an action item. Name's board order in junior college.
Rita, question. Underneath McCall snowmobile club, we have a bunch of payments that were made, but they all say past due invoices.
Yep.
Were we charged late fees on those?
No.
No?
Nope.
Usually you say late fee charge.
Yep, there were no late fees on them. I just, I was not aware of them. They sent them to me, so I'm sure they got taken care of.
Okay. Is the process corrected so that we don't have past due invoices in the future? Or is it something that need to address with the department or?
Those are all for the snowmobile club and why they were left hanging out there for that long. But there's a couple of other ones that are that way as well. That sometimes that's about tracking within the department and what they're not.
Okay, I will ask questions. I don't like seeing past due invoices.
Neither do I.
On our bills, so.
Rita, under the Pelt fund, we bought four pursuit rated. And it works out, I think around 37,000 apiece.
Mm-hmm.
I thought we ordered eight.
The other four came from a different fund, so.
From last year, from last year's budget?
We budgeted four for this year.
Yeah.
Okay, so these are on top of those four?
Yes.
Okay, because I knew there was four more somewhere and I couldn't.
Yeah, they came from, they're in your board order claims.
They're.
You can see the split out between the two.
That's where I saw that.
I saw four of them in Pelt and four of them in motor pool.
Yep.
Right. So we won't pay that bill until we get the vehicles?
I'm holding the check. I'm not sure exactly how, how they're doing that. It's being coordinated between sheriff's department and road department. If it's going to be hand delivered at the time that they receive the vehicles or who's picking them up or what's going on.
I'm assuming they'll probably take it with them when it's clear down in Morgan, Utah.
Mm-hmm.
Probably have to take, take a check with them. I don't know. Hey, any other questions?
How do they transport those?
They take guys down, three, four guys in the rig and drive them all back.
I have eight of them. That's a lot.
If you want to go and help, I'm sure they'd, they'd take the help.
They'd turn on the lights.
I don't know how far it is to Logan, but it's probably eight hours.
I want to play with the.
They're in Ogden.
They're near Ogden? Okay, so that's probably from here, what, five hours? Seven and a half hours. So that'll be a one day trip. Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the claims, the board order in, do we have junior college? No.
We did. We had quite a few of them this time. I have one that we approved the claims, board order claims and junior college tuition.
I'll second that.
Who did second in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And Rita, we had gotten an email from the lady of the North Idaho College. I'm assuming that she did end up following up with you because of all of the.
Yeah, she sent it to me as well.
There was a link on there. It was like, I'm not opening anything right now unless I know what that link is for.
She did send me the invoice for all of the students verified. They were perfect.
Jeremy has me worried. I saw that link and I went, I don't think so. And I had never seen a link like that before and that's why I was confused.
Yeah. It was just only the invoice that was.
I got one, I got a birthday card done over the weekend, which was my birthday and I thought, okay, well, you know. Oh no, I'm looking at the sender going, I have no idea who this is and what a way to get a virus on a birthday card. They are smart. Yeah.
The big one now, the big virus I've heard is the one that says, you want a new iPhone? Just get on and take our survey.
Yeah.
I get.
I get a lot of those.
Let's see, this morning I got 32 junk emails after I deleted it within five minutes. You've won this, but you have to pay for it.
Right. I'll explain that to my daughter. Hers are like, yeah, new car, skis. Don't open it. It's not real. They want money. Thanks so much.
Okay, that's. Okay, we're going to move on down to our agenda. These are elected official reports. First one up is Sue.
Um, I don't really have anything to report other than June is out today. She moved her back out.
Oh boy.
So if you guys have any questions for me, I will answer them.
One of your new appraisers starting? Do you already have one?
I already have one and I have another one starting next Tuesday.
And are you going to be here for?
Yes.
Wherever that was. I saw it somewhere. Yeah, with Pat.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Mr. Miller.
Good morning, commissioners. As I was on vacation last week, but my staff was able to manage the department just fine. To just give you a brief overview of some matters that took place. Uh, we did receive a withdrawal of declaration of candidacy for one of the candidates in the commissioner race. Mr. Edward Allen submitted his withdrawal on Friday. Uh, so we are working with our Caxton, our printing company for the ballots to remove his name from the ballot. So Mr. Edward Allen has in fact officially withdrawn from the commissioner's race. Um, he did meet the deadline of Friday to submit that to our office. So, um, we are getting ready to prep the ballots or the ballots are prepped. Um, but we're, now we're having them printed. We are following the deadlines for the absentee ballots to be going out. Uh, so just to give you an overview of, of elections, that was what I wanted to share with you. A court, we do have a jury trial. We actually have several jury trials scheduled for Wednesday. Uh, my understanding is that there's going to be one going forward officially. And we do have a few others that are in the queue, for lack of better terms, uh, to be tried at a later date. But this Wednesday, there will be one trial going forward. We have our outside audit presentation today. Uh, Mr. Jordan Zweigert will be here at two o'clock to provide us with an overview of the fiscal year 2021 audit. And while I was gone, uh, my chief deputy did send out the letters to the elected officials and department heads regarding budget requests. Uh, so we are again, that time of year in full budget pressure preparations for fiscal year 2023. Um, and we will be meeting with elected officials and department heads prior to us scheduling the budget workshops. But that's the process that we're going to take, that's the process that's going to take place this year once again. Uh, again, just trying to get, uh, my emails checked and make sure that I'm on top of everything. But that's just a brief overview of matters involving the clerk's office. And I will stand for any questions if you have any.
My team, I think it was Friday last week and kind of did a tour stuff and they don't really need you in the clerk's office anymore Doug. I think they could probably handle it, so.
That's nice to hear. It's nice to hear.
Everything was going smoothly.
We're missed every day, I know.
I'm sure I was only missed one day.
Rested and therefore, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Hey, any other questions for Doug? All right, thanks. Mr. Oki.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair Member of the Board. Prosecutor Noggle again sends his regrets for not being here. Uh, does not have a, a court commitment today, but rather a plumbing emergency at home, which, uh, is no fun. So certainly wish him the best on getting that resolved so they can have a hot shower in the morning. Uh, he did want to, uh, have me give a little bit of an update on, uh, the multidisciplinary task, uh, team. Uh, the task force is up and running. They had the first meeting last week. I think that's something that he's spearheaded since he's been here and is excited to see that up and, up and going. So I think that's a good community resource that, uh, he will follow through on and make sure that those services are available to, uh, our at-risk youth and have gotten some good, uh, cooperation from health and welfare and some of the school officials and law enforcement folks that need to be part of that task force. Uh, as Doug said, uh, we've got, uh, a busy court calendar on Wednesday. Ashley will be handling, uh, those courtroom duties, be her first jury trial since joining the team, uh, last year. So, uh, certainly wish her well in, in those endeavors and, uh, glad to see things kind of getting on track where we can, we can get through some of these cases that we've got, uh, coming up uh, or have been on our, our dock for quite some time. On the civil side, uh, things have been busy. I did work on a response for the request for reconsideration and circulated that back around. I was kind of scrambling to, to get that, uh, on, completed and on the agenda since today's Commissioner Bingaman's last day here on the board and wanted him to participate. But I'm not sure we got that on the agenda, so, uh, we'll have to figure out how to, uh, how to do that, um, correctly, but, uh, I, I think we're, we're at a place where we have, uh, at least a response to, to that request, a few other things that I'm, uh, working on as well.
And is that time sensitive? Don't we have so many days?
We have 21 days from the date, so we, we're not going to be timed out if we don't do it today. But, uh, uh, the, I think the push was just to ensure that Commissioner Bingaman had an opportunity to weigh in and vote on that since it's been an issue that he's been working on as part of the board, uh, from.
Can we amend the agenda to do that?
Uh, now that we've started the meeting, it can only be done on an emergency basis, so we'll have to put it on next week. I'm working with the road department on getting contracts in place for the, uh, request for proposals for the, uh, the, um, paving projects, uh, that you guys approved last week. That'll be, uh, a, a busy project, but given the, um, importance to the county, felt like, and I talked to Jeff a couple of times after those, uh, bid proposals were opened up, that we, we needed to have an agreement in place with valley paving to ensure that, uh, they build those roads according to the specs and we've got an agreement that will reflect that. So I am going to try and get those done this week and get them completed so we can get work started on it right away.
When you say that, so I have a question and Jeff's not here, so I was going to talk to him offline. Those RFPs only have paving in them. Those roads are not built to spec. So are you saying that you're doing a contract stating they have to build them to spec before paving?
No, the contract that, that, the, really the contract that we, that we can craft is going to be according to the specifications that were in the proposal.
That is just grinding and paving.
Correct. Right.
Let's talk about that.
But, but there are specific, specific criteria that was put in the request for proposals for paving purposes. And that's what will be reflected in the contract, not going back and, and, uh, redoing the base layer and, and everything else. So that's something that I think Jeff needs to address, uh, how you guys want that handled, uh, going forward.
Well, and it's not just our roads that don't have bases. Highway is the same way.
Right.
That's just the way they built them back then. The idea was to grind it and mix it with concrete and eventually build that base using pavement over a period of 5,000 years. But, um, none, not too many roads have base under them and it's a very expensive.
Right.
Practice.
Yeah. I, the other, the other thing is we had, uh, we had been working on an employment matter and something that I, I, I don't intend to discuss here publicly with the board, but we'll be reaching out to you, uh, in executive session to come up with the next steps for that, uh, that issue, so we can.
When do you expect that?
Uh, I, I'd like to get that going this week. Our, uh, outside contractor has been, uh, out of the office until tomorrow. He's still out today, so, uh, need to.
So probably next week?
Need to visit with him, yeah. Yeah, I'll work on it this week and come up with a plan to present to the board next week and we can, we can proceed on from there. So, uh, that's it for the prosecutor's office. If you have any questions, happy to entertain those.
I have one question. Because Mr. Allen pulled his candidacy, did he also pull it from the nomination in front of the governor?
I wasn't, I'm not up to speed on that, so I'm not sure.
Because that?
I don't think so.
I don't know, Mr. Chairman. I, I just, yeah, I don't know if that has been done or not.
Guess we'll just wait to find out.
Yeah.
See what happens there, but that should be coming here, what, next week?
The, the appointment for the vacancy, it's on the governor's timeframe. Uh, and it's up to him to, to make those appointments. It would be better to have that, you know, that vacant position filled soon, so we don't have.
Yeah, because it makes it really hard for us to be able to do things here with just two of us.
Correct. I can reach out to the governor's office and see if they've got.
Appointment scheduled this week, so Tuesday and Wednesday is what I heard. They have appointments scheduled and then we should know by the end of the week.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. All right. Any other questions for Brian? All right, thanks. Have a great day. Sheriff. I watch the mic's going to come back down.
It's down a little bit. Good morning.
Good morning.
Don't have a whole lot for you today. Um, we did, um, get a document. It's the acceptance of our body camera, um, grant, and then we have to accept it and, so your approval, you'll get that next week for that. There's some guidance and, uh, protocols we have to follow and, um.
I was excited to see that because I thought we had been denying that grant.
There, well, we, there were two or three that we applied for. We got one and the other one that you got that denial on was.
That confused me.
You've already signed off on the, on that body camera one grant. And this is the acceptance now and all the guidelines that we have to follow and set up reporting monthly and certain things like that. So we're, present that next, next week for your signature.
I think probably today we'll have a check cut for the new vehicles down in Ogden, Utah. Now, we approved that this morning, so if you, along with Jeff, guys decide to drive, go down there and get them, why, that check will be available, I'm assuming.
Okay. Sounds good.
We decided a field trip. For the entire county to go sit and get eight of them.
All right, we'll get that worked out. Um, and so we've made an op, uh, we, uh, hired another.
Well, good.
Jailer is accepted and then we've got two in background. I believe I already told you that, so we are proceeding there. And have some movement on our detective position that's open.
We have a new jailer and two in background to come in. Okay? Good, good, good.
You're getting applications. That's exciting. Anything in nine-on-one?
No.
Dispatch?
We're at six, which is, is good.
Oh, good. And rule of eighty did pass, so that should help.
Yes, it passed. We're waiting to see if the governor's going to sign that.
Was that for dispatch and parole or just dispatch?
That's the, that's the dispatch.
Not parole.
Communications officers. Yeah. So.
Yeah, that's good. That'll make it better, easier hopefully.
Well, for the, for the new ones starting, you know, some of our seasoned ones will see a lot on that, but.
Ever had anybody from dispatch actually retire though from dispatch?
Not one that hopefully will.
No.
It's pretty rare, I think. Yeah.
Yeah, um, we had one had, had worked for us and then worked other places and came back and then worked, you know, a couple of years, but retired. But really not rule of, well, under the rule of ninety, have all the hours for that. So.
Can't think of anything else. All right, any more questions for Sheriff? No, we'll move on. Treasure.
Come on, commissioners. Not a whole lot to report from the treasurer's office besides the fact that we are, uh, working through our tax deed process. And when we pulled the list in January, we had 91 properties to collect on. As of today, we are down to 37. Um, we're looking to collect $27,100 in tax and that amount changes daily just due to the interest rates. But those properties have been sent off to a title company to do a title search on them and we'll continue working through the checklist. Um, we also have an interview or a couple of interviews this week for the vacant elections coordinator slash treasurer, senior deputy position. So hoping to see some good candidates come in for that and get that position filled. I'm sure the clerk's office would appreciate the extra help.
You two are splitting that position.
We are.
And you said it was for senior deputy for your department?
Mm-hmm.
So who, does that person report to?
They'll report to the clerk's office.
You located in the clerk's office? Okay, so you guys are just sharing duties some way?
Great. That's awesome.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, excited to see how it works out.
And then 91 over to 37, that'll go down pretty fast.
Yeah.
Usually end up with one or two the day before and they'll come in at 4:59 and.
Yeah.
You know, but they're paying interest and all that stuff now.
And this, the title search step of the process actually adds about $200 in fees to the outstanding balance. So all of these will increase by $200. Um, where I was hoping to get the numbers down before that because you hate to see somebody who owes, you know, $200 in delinquent 2018 taxes have that amount double. But, uh, we've done our best. We called every person who owed under $200, left messages, tried to reach out in any way that we could and just had no luck. So we still have, like I said, 37 of them on there, but hopefully that number will get smaller quickly.
Should. Okay, any more questions for Jan? All right, thank you. Have a great day. And just to remind everybody, this Saturday is the Lincoln Day dinner at the Legion. You guys are all invited. I think it starts at five or 5:30. And, uh, be good to have you there. Move on down to department heads. First one up is Annette.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, we're picking up some, we're not super, super busy yet. We're down about 10 permits from this time last year. Had some contractors say they got people backing out, but we're still getting plans in, so. Too early to tell on that part. Tamrec's bringing in their employee housing plans this week. Doing two of the Quonset huts, 62 people apiece, I believe. That'd be good. And they're also applying for an ordinance amendment. They want to do a five-story wood structure and the code only allows for four. So we got them, they're going through the process with Cinda. And we'll get you all that information as.
So will they have to put sprinklers on that fifth floor?
The whole thing will have to be sprinkled.
The whole thing will have to be sprinkled? I think we're going to see more of that.
And if this does, you know, if you guys go for it or however it works, it will be for the whole county.
Right.
Yeah.
We'll have to buy, we'll have to start buying ladder trucks.
Yeah.
They implemented that in the valley a long time ago, so I'm really surprised that in, you know, areas where it's so heavily forested that I haven't touched it already, but.
Well, I can tell you from, my son was a farmer in Boise and he drives a ladder truck and they're almost $2 million apiece.
Yeah.
And so it's not a cheap step for the fire departments. Okay, any questions for Annette? All right, thank you. Skip, good to see you.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, so last time I told you about V Corp was putting in for a grant and decided to go for that and, excuse me, but I decided to try to use that for, to open a youth and family center. Brick and mortar, can't use it for the grant, leasing you could. But then there's also the possibility of the IDJC crisis center money, which could be used for brick and mortar.
But we could probably use opioids too.
Yeah, yeah, so the grant is, it's a little bit complicated, so it's for, um, emotional health and for SUD. But we can't, we can't use the money for any of the services we're already doing with V Corp. So exactly who's going to be putting in for, I mean, they're still working on that today. They're going to have the final put in for the, the providers, but it looks pretty unanimous that we want to use it to open a, a crisis center for youth and family. It's going to be the goal.
And we'll have to be careful with that, Skip. I think it's a great idea, but legislature just passed a deal, I think they passed it, where counties can only lease up to five years. Used to be that you could have someone come in and build you a courthouse and lease it from them for 30 years. And then eventually at the end of 30 years, you make a balloon payment and you own it. Legislature's taking that away from us, so we may only be able to lease this facility for ever until we get enough funds to outright buy it.
Well, the.
Keep that in mind, I guess.
Well, but it's not going to be the county. It's going to be V Corp that's putting in for it. And it's Central District Health that'll be doing, will be the treasurer, the, you know, the executive director of the grant. So, um, keep that in mind, but like I said, it's just, there's certainly no promise. We're going to get it. It's 500,000 a year, I believe for four years is the maximum. So we're in the process. Mary heard the conversation. She reached out. And it turns out that just didn't need her support, but she was willing to and really appreciated that. Besides that, I believe the rule of eighty has passed.
Is it for your, for, for parole too?
So parole, felony parole was already the rule of eighty. Um, so this is for juvenile detention and probation and adult misdemeanor.
Okay, that's good news.
So it's, my understanding that it's passed, it's finally done deal after 30 years of.
A lot of years.
People trying to get that done.
But the governor hasn't signed that bill yet. It's sitting on his desk.
Okay.
We've all been announced.
It's just passed the House and Senate.
Not sign that bill.
Yeah. And then you had, we had a discussion this Friday or whenever it was about, uh, TV, IT stuff for the office up there.
Just as budget's coming out, so we have meetings that happen in the courtroom. I mean, like the MDT that Brian was talking about, there's other community people that do it. Like I understand I got, was reached out by the board for, um, they want to meet in there. There's some other community stuff. So I wasn't thinking about anything complicated, but just like TV with a camera and a microphone. Or meetings in there for people that can participate by Zoom. Like when they had the MDT meeting, there were people from the cares unit, um, that couldn't make it. And just quite frankly, our society's gotten used to being able to have that option. So if there is an affordable way, um, I, I think it'd be useful.
Yeah, I think we should go ahead and try and budget for it, figure out how much it's going to cost you. Maybe work with IT and what they can give you a rough estimate and how much, you know, we're looking at just for budget so we can do that, but.
And that'd be through the IT budget anyway, right? That'd be part of their request. Okay, so I just wanted, before I reached out to Jeremy, just to ask you if you had a.
Well, and I think it'll end up being used, like you said, for other things, kind of a community resource for that area of the valley. And I think that's certainly appropriate. I want to talk to Brian Noggle about it and make sure that he's, he thinks that we need it and.
And, and they, they did request for the last meeting and, um.
What did they? Okay.
I don't know if it'll happen off, but DeeDee just used her little laptop and was able to make that, to make that work. So I don't think it needs to be a complicated system, but. I'll, uh, reach out to IT and I'll ask them if they'll consider putting that in their budget.
How many meetings a month would you say you have in that'll, in that courtroom? How many meetings a month would you say you have in that'll, in that courtroom?
Um, I, I don't think you could do it by month, but I mean, it's like, so we have a couple from McCall PD that happens. They use that space. Um, then MDT's probably gonna be once a month. And we'll have other community people like the indigent board, which I think that's quarterly. And um, so it's, I would say several times a year.
What indigent board are you talking about, are you talking about?
Um. For Valley County?
Yeah, it's for older folks that don't have any heirs. Now, what do they call that? Gosh darn it.
That's the guardian.
Guardian.
Guardianship, yeah.
Cause there's no indigent board left that I know of.
Sorry, it was the guardianship.
Yeah, community guardianship, yeah, okay.
Um, so just, just opportunities like that. We also have people like vocational rehab who, they're gonna be up a couple of times a month. They not necessarily plan on using us, but they could just to be a resource to our community.
Um, what about the unemployment office, are they out of you guys too?
Uh huh, they've been meeting across the street over at the.
Eight Lands?
Yeah, actually, I think just went to CDH, they secured a long-term.
That's right.
Central District.
Right, so they're out this street now?
The campus planning committee has also made some recommendations for use up there. So our, hopefully you'll be at that meeting, it's Wednesday the sixth of April. Mel, I don't know if you can put that on your.
Um, yeah, that's the same as road advisory, right?
It is, and I'm gonna be out of town that week, so if you could attend that one, it's.
Yeah, I'll get this.
Is that on Monday?
Until one thirty, but I'm sorry?
Is that on Monday?
It's a Wednesday.
On the day?
Strategic planning is this week and then that one's next week.
Okay.
But the campus planning committee, Brian had expressed interest in using that facility more for the prosecuting attorney's office, and I'm sure that they would need the ability to Zoom for some of the meetings that they're gonna hold.
Sure, you're gonna be here on that, on the fours, right?
I'll be here on Monday.
Okay. Otherwise, we're gonna have to cancel that meeting if you're not here.
I don't believe there's any reason I can't attend that.
Hey, anything else? We don't have anybody in detention now, do we?
No, we do not. We have um a couple that are still in the GPS monitoring. Um, felony cases that it looks like there might be petitioned into juvenile court.
Yeah.
But we are paying for that, just so you know, for one of them. Um, so my, my electronic monitoring budget is a thousand dollars and it's well on the whole. But still, within that light item, it's, it's covered between the SCRAM and the other things that are in the line item.
We gonna need to bump that next year?
We might, I don't know, when we do the budget planning.
Yeah, keep that in mind on the budget.
Uh, it's just kind of weird circumstance, not too often we have too many, two felony cases, juvenile charges and adults within a month apart and monitoring's been for one of them almost six months.
Unfortunately, our population is growing and as it grows, we're gonna have this kind of thing come up.
Yeah. I'll, I'll look at that with Mr. Miller and there.
Hey, any more questions for Skip? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Melissa. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good.
So, um, continuing to work on place making and the Cascade Mobility Team and getting those documents either established or updated. The, that ties into another opportunity that surfaced, which is called the Community Boot Camp. And so I work with the Weekend Network, which is the Western Asses, I don't know, I don't know, it stands for something, but it's the Montana.
Action Network, I remember that part.
Yeah, it's the tri-state network.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Western Assessment Tri-State Network. Basically, that effort um is funded by a grant and it comes up with the best practices for doing community reviews and so it brings in those um economic development people from all those states to kind of share the best practices. And it's also the umbrella that the peer, peer learning network goes underneath of. Um, but there's another effort that came out of that called the Community Boot Camp. And so um, the Economic Development Council Leadership Academy or the McCall Chamber Leadership Academy applied to be part of that boot camp. And I'll be working with that group um as they go through that process and it's, it's really a perfect opportunity. I don't know if you got a chance to look at what it is. Um, but the Leadership Academy is charged with doing a so it's a kind of like service learning for the, the next year, they have to implement a community project. And so this community boot camp works with community groups to be successful in implementation of community projects. And then they give them five hundred dollars of funding, I think that might be matching funding. So um, that Leadership Academy is gonna be going through that, focusing on what they wanna do. Hopefully getting set up to be really successful through that professional development training and then getting a little bit of seed money to get it started. So.
And send that to Lindsay, so I'm really happy that they chose, they picked up on that.
I am too, I, I um had reached out to Toby's place, cause they had received some funding from that grant previously um to help with their shreds, establishing their shred shed. Um, and they received those funds and so then um I said, you know, there's more funding, go and apply again. And, and I thought they were gonna apply, but I don't think they did. And so um, I thought I was working with Toby's place and then it was the Leadership Academy. I was like, oh, okay, well, that's perfect, that's really great for that group. So I'll be doing that this Thursday evening and I did that last Wednesday. Um, and then I continue to have master gardener classes in the evening and so that'll be this Wednesday and then this Saturday. And so I am kind of still over the, all over the place with evening programs and weekend programs. And so then I'm flexing out my time during the week to try to get some normalcy of forty hours. And so um, it, I've been proactive with scheduling those days out and that's been really helpful uh for that work-life balance. So I'm also in um conversations about the Community Health Grant with V Corp and Skip. And it's mostly just to see if um extension would be an asset at the, at the table with that grant. Um, saying that, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to provide some educational programs or some family learning sessions. Um, and so working with Shelley just to see if there, there's, if, if that would strengthen their, their application. So I'm in conversation um with that team. And then after the um Ranchers Feeding Youth, I've been in discussion with the Idaho Farm Bureau for, I guess I'm just gonna reference twenty nineteen a lot today. But since twenty nineteen, we've been talking about doing a farm tour. And we did, not with the Idaho Farm Bureau, but I did do a farm tour in the fall of twenty twenty. And people were excited about getting out and going and do that hands-on outdoor activity during that time. Um, but we were wanting to focus more on a ranch type tour with Idaho Farm Bureau and then they were gonna sponsor a bus. And um Shirley Florence has memory of doing something similar to this. Steve Anderson has wanted to do something like this, but focusing on weeds. I'm trying to see if there's an opportunity or sweet spot to make it both happen on the same day. Um, we might be looking at little pre-emergent florets with the weed tour because they wanna do it early season before they get in the thick with cattle. So anyway, I'm exploring possibilities to see um if we can pull off a weed tour in twenty twenty-two. And if we don't make it happen this year, we'll try again next year, but it's kind of in the beginning of, you know, putting the pieces together with that.
Well, so when thinking about that, is there an opportunity of, you know, to work with Steve and doing some kind of social media posts to say, look for these and this is how you treat them? Maybe Mackenzie could work on that with them.
Yeah, and um Casey Carnes, our previous admin was really savvy with Canva. She created nice little graphic design stuff. Um, she had some infographic type of information that she put together. I don't know if we still have that. Um, but she did, you know, circulate that on Facebook and share it out and I'll just see if we have some of that. And if not, then um we can work with Mackenzie because public education is, and, and, you know, being able to identify it early before it gets out of control is, is kind of key to being able to keep that under control. So um, yeah, I'll, I'll put that on my radar.
Well, didn't they do shirts one year with pictures of weeds on them or?
Oh.
Something like that, those were really actually pretty popular.
That was the scarf.
The scarf, yes.
And that got national news, yeah, that was like, that was a big deal. And so um, I am so excited, cause there's a new one coming out and it's gonna be um the top. We were trying to do the top ten and we worked with the state office. Um, and then it ended up being like the top eleven because, oh, we just need to have one more on that scarf. But it's got Medusa head and it's got Scotch broom brush and it's got, um, it's got just a bunch of them and it's gorgeous. It's the most, it's, anyway, that one just dropped. It's gonna go into the bookstore rather than through Cal's Publishing, which is where we were originally distributing. And so it's kind of shifting into more of a mainstream venue, um at least on campus. And a hundred percent silk, so we've gone from polyester to like a higher quality with like this absolutely stunning design. So once I get those, I'm gonna get a sample when I go to annual conference and I'll, I'll come and show you and I have samples of all of those in the office. Um, and we did have, when we were doing some advertising about that, some families and grandparents coming in and buying a bandana and buying the weed book and then making it an activity they would do with their kids, which I thought was really cool. And I always bring those out to the Master Gardener Group, which this Saturday Steve's gonna be coming and talking to them about invasives. Um, and then Scott Severs, I, and I have been in cor- uh correspondence and I'm gonna be presenting on like top ten um environment or stressors, plant stressors in the area. And so I'll be presenting that, but we, we always put our heads together, you know, he sends me stuff and I send him stuff. He's with Idaho Department of Lands. And, you know, what do you think this is or what is that or what are you seeing? And so I've established a partnership with him to just be in more regular communication. Um, and, and also they've done things like forestry tours too, and so I'm in partnership with them to be supportive. And so, yes, um, I will also promote the cool, the new design for that effort.
There's something else that we, I think would be worth looking into and Scott Turleyton was the one that turned me on to it. There's an app on your phone where you can point it at a plant and it'll tell you what it is, not just a weed, but any plant.
Yeah.
And I think that is phenomenal, that technology, especially for younger kids growing up. And he said it's a free app.
Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a few of them. Um, but that's a good idea to promote that on, on pub, social media too and then, and then sharing it with Mackenzie is really nice. I think that helps direct a few more people into the drone program, that, programs that happened last week, so.
And this is a weird bridge, but planning and zoning addresses invasive species and some of their subdivision uh decisions.
Mm hmm.
I don't know if there's a way to try and have a brochure that we could give to new landowners that are joining us in this area, you know, how we could do that?
I think that's what Casey developed, um, was like a top ten trifold.
Okay.
Um, I'll have to go through our files and see if I can pin that, point that, pin that down. Um, those weed manual books, they cost five dollars and that is the best resource. And I know Steve orders those with his publication funds and I order them with my publication funds and Valley Soil and Water orders them. But if they're, if you're wanting to give someone a physical something, that five-dollar weed book is, is the um go-to document.
I wish the title companies would give them at every closing.
Yeah, um, there is a document that I just learned about too from my um cohort, Jim Ekins, he's the state watershed person. And so he developed a document that would be specifically to realtors and to, I think, homeowners. And it was about how their properties impact the watershed, so that's a resource that's out there too.
Jim Ekins?
Yeah, and he comes through and does uh trainings for the area and he does a local water um steward, like a master water steward program. And so we do have a few water stewards that have been trained in this area. And then I have all the kits in the office and so they'll rent out the kits at the beginning of the season and then they turn them in at the end. Um, or I'll have um different groups, like the Pay It Children's Forest wants to rent out some of those water kits cause they've been through the training and whatnot. But he does those trainings statewide and so I can say to him, you know, if you're driving through Valley County, let's pick a date, let's, let's do that training, let's make it available. I think since COVID, he's switched the content of that training to be all online. And so I think it's more accessible, but maybe a different experience to take the class. Um, and so he might have some sort of hybrid thing where you take the training online, but then he'll do an in-person hands-on workshop when he goes through town or something like that. Um, Pay It Children's Forest is working with him to schedule a mm Project Wild training. And that would be for environmental educators and teachers in the area. And any of those project trainings are just like awesome. If anybody's out there teaching about environmental issues or ideas or topics, Project Wet, Wild, Aquatic Learning Tree, Wonders of Wetlands are like amazing training, so it's great that he's gonna be providing that locally. Um. Over the weekend, Allison did the four H livestock. And then last week, they did the drone camps during the spring break week. And I'm gonna have her come to the next commissioners' meeting and she can report out in more detail about those programs. Um, that next commissioners' report out, I'll be at the Extension Annual Conference, which hasn't happened since twenty nineteen.
Where's the discher?
Moscow.
Moscow.
Um, and then uh Dylan, the Americor in our office, had an injury. And so she's gonna be getting some medical assessments um and hoping for a speedy, speedy recovery. Um, and so she'll be canceling her after-school programming this week and then I'm, I'm hoping for good news. I scheduled a time on March eighteenth to discuss the reimbursement for travel to programming. Um, and I also scheduled it for forty-five minutes just to, to take an opportunity to give a more detailed presentation on extension programs. I know I come in and present here, but I wanted to be able to do PowerPoint and just say, here's a summary for the year. And that's similar to what I do for um the advisory board. When I do check-ins, I just kind of make these summary PowerPoints, which eventually I, I have goals to get on the webpage. There's a new web person and so I'm working with them to just, number one, get the website updated. But then eventually my vision is to have these annual PowerPoint report outs, so anybody can go in and just get these little summaries of what's happening from the Extension Office and how they're contributing annually to, to activities um in the West Central Mountains. So I think that's, that's all I have to report out on today. Um, any questions?
Is Allison here today? We're doing a, well, I don't know that that would impact her. They're gonna do that Fair Board um financial review this afternoon, so.
I haven't gone in to check her schedule yet, she keeps her schedule on uh the Google Calendar. Um, but I know that she did work over the weekend and had a big week last week, so I think that she'll be out today is my, what I'm doing in my mind.
Cassie anyway, but.
Yeah, but she might let Cassie know if she wants to come in.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's any of those things that are happening, um, would love to know, you know, more in advance. I don't know how to know that in advance, but um that helps, cause then you can put it on your calendar and, and then plan for it.
Absolutely, I just didn't know it either until I looked at the calendar yesterday or the agenda yesterday, so.
Got you.
Um. We'll get, we'll get together with Cassie, cause I think she's working from home now too, she started a new job from home, so.
Oh, wow.
What her capacity is.
Um, just the boot camp agenda really quick, fostering rural innovation, building a network through and doing storytelling, financing community projects, which they're talking about um doing Kickstarter type of stuff, ready, set, launch your project. It looks like a really awesome training and the first training already with the fostering rural innovation, he specifically, this is um Charlie French with the New Hampshire Extension, he's the specialist over at That Way. Um, I have my personal theory that New Hampshire's our sister state on the East Coast, like Idaho, New Hampshire, live free or die, you know. Anyway, so he's, when I go to extension conferences, I, I look for specific people and I'm looking for West Virginia, I'm looking for New Hampshire. We just have a lot of similarities in our states, so I find that I learn the most from those peers. Um, anyway, he um has been doing a lot of research about innovation in rural places and he was great to listen to. And there's a lot of focus about innovation taking places in urban areas. But um, he talked about place making and about how that can bring like direct economic impacts and how there's innovation that takes place there and then there's a lot of other things that happen with creative class that follows. And so that just validated me with my place making efforts in Cascade and um, and that community and the committee I'm working with. Because sometimes you say place making and people say place what? And so.
Yeah.
Um, you'll, it's just a jargony term, but uh it's nice to hear about what other people are doing and, and get validated with what I'm doing here. So excited to learn through that boot camp myself. Yep, thank you.
Melissa, before you go, just real quick, two things. Um, guessing by the early spring we're having, we're probably gonna have grasshopper issues again this year, so.
Yeah.
Just kind of be on that line with the state on that. And then um possibly looking. And then possibly looking at maybe some drought assistance too through Soil Conservation District for some of these guys. Who knows how this summer's gonna turn out, but this is way too early for this kind of weather, so.
Yeah, and last year it was looking really dry. And, and there was some really great remote learning that was happening, directly targeted at ranchers. And how do you be resilient and adaptive in rapidly changing climate? And so they had some drought specific trainings that we were promoting through social media and through our newsletter. But I think I just, I need to put it on my radar to use Mackenzie as a resource to help promote those things too. Cause I think that's the hardest part is getting the word out. And so yeah, she is an app like that. That link is appreciated with trying to get the word out. I just have to make it, I have, you know, my system and I haven't totally mentally folded her into my system yet of advertising, but I will.
Well, just as long as it's kind of in the back of your mind, you kind of think about it when we get there.
No, it's, it's always in the back of my mind around this time. And, and this year, like last year I thought was gonna be a zinger. And it's just kind of this impending doom that goes from season to season.
Well, last year we got a lot more beds before it froze. And so I think those beds are gonna be where we'll have our issues this year.
Yeah, it's just kind of waiting to happen in full glory each year if it doesn't, yeah.
Okay.
On my radar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Works with that stuff. We're at 40% this year so far, as far as snowpack. Down to 40%.
August and September are gonna be tough. Hey, thank you. Move on down our list. Pat. Good morning.
Good morning. So I don't have a lot to report either, just to piggyback on, on what the sheriff said. The person that we've offered the position for, for detention is from down in the valley, having a heck of a time finding a place to live. So we have pushed his start date to May 1st, hoping that Rose's advocates will be available. But I also just talked to an employee today who may have housing issues. She doesn't know yet. So that's kind of the battle that we're fighting. I also.
Pat on that, so the detention, I mean, we've got the manufactured that Scott needs to get hooked up. I mean, it is one bedroom, one bath. That we could use temporarily if it's, it's not a family.
No, it's just one person.
Yeah, if it's one person, we could see if Scott can get that thing hooked up as quickly as possible and use.
Yeah, we just need to get Scott some help.
Yeah, we do, definitely.
Yeah, yeah, that too.
Hey, you have an action item?
I do. So in the appraiser, I mean, in reevaluation, we have an employee that has taken the initiative without the pay or without the title to do training and to do more advanced things within the appraiser position. One of the things that we started looking at, but long before this person started taking the initiative was adding a senior appraiser position that would do training of some of the newer employees. Plus do some other more advanced type appraising. And it just, it didn't, we didn't get it put through or talked about at all with budget. Because we didn't have anybody in the position that would make sense to do that. So now we have a person that really should be paid for the work that they're doing. And so we would like to change or add a senior appraiser position. It'll be at the same level as a senior appraiser three. It would be a 6% increase. So it, it's the same level as what a position that we have. So it would be a 6% increase. As far as the budget for the sheriffs, I mean, the reevaluation, we haven't been able to fill that new position. Because every time we get close to getting it filled, somebody would leave. So we're still trying to fill that position and keep everybody else on.
But we, do we still have the program though for them to become a commercial appraiser? We pay for all that training and all that stuff still. So this is kind of before that or below that.
It's the same level.
Same thing. But they just pay for their training themselves?
No, it's, it's different. They, they still go. So in, in the case of a senior appraiser, they'd probably be more like an appraiser two. But you add on the duties of training new employees that come in and that's what moves them up.
So would they still go through the commercial appraiser training to reach that?
Yeah, if they want to.
That's a different level again.
That's a different level. They're parallel, they're not.
And do you have any idea of the difference in salary? I mean, hourly wage?
Yeah, right now the person's at 2270. A 6% increase would make it 2406.
Does it impact the star deadlines? How does it improve service transparency, accountable, responsible?
And that's a great question. It does, it does improve service because you have one person dedicated to training. It also includes, improves responsiveness, because if you have one person dedicated to the training of that person, then it means that the whole department can be more responsive as that person is learning and getting to know the job better. And accountable, you know, again, it just, it's all about training. So if you look at all of the whole picture, that the service responsibility or responsive accountability and transparent, they can be all of those when a person is fully trained and not trying to figure it out on their own.
So also with this training position, so as we transition software into something in the future, would this person have the capacity to be the trainer to help others learn new software? Or is this simply on the appraisal training portion?
So I think in a lot of ways that depends on the person that is in that position. I can tell you that the person that is currently, we're looking at for this position has already taken the bull by the horns as far as Pro Val and dived in really deep to try to figure out what's going on when something's not working. So.
So Pat, if I'm understanding this right, we're, you're asking for basically a new position today?
A new position.
And then you'll come back and get the approval for this employee to move into that later? Or you're asking for both?
We're asking for both right now.
It's about $3,200 more a year.
Yeah, 6%, if you, over the full year, but we're only, I mean, we're already into March, so.
Well, and actually you've been so low in your, your salaries, I mean, you should have plenty of money in your budget this year to cover that expense.
We haven't been able to fill that other position.
So we'll have to get this on budget for next year.
Yes.
Help us remember that.
So as far as filling that position though, I mean, we don't engage in who fills positions. So this would be within the department and whoever was gonna fill that position that would. So we're only approving the position itself and the expenditure of those funds.
Right. From a budget standpoint, it, it doesn't affect the budget. So that, you know, the assessor's office is still staying within where they need to. I mean, that's a question I always ask when somebody wants to do something like this. Do you have the budget? Because if they don't, we have to, it's part of the budget process.
Pat, do we have a job description for this?
Yes.
I love the self motivation, you know, always taking the initiative to go and learn. I love that part. So I have no problem with that.
So you wanna make that a motion?
A move that we approve a change in the appraisal department and allow a senior appraiser position to be created.
Second, any more discussion? Home favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Bingham is awful quiet over there. You'd think it was his last week or something.
He's gonna miss us. He's getting sad.
They have any questions for me?
Nope.
Alrighty, thanks.
I don't think so. Thank you. Uh, next victim is Jeremy. Good morning.
I also don't have a whole lot today. I'll be, we'll be putting something on the agenda next week or the week after to approve the purchase of the new computers. I'm just working out the Windows licensing and as soon as I have that.
Those are desktops and laptops?
Yes, both. Desktops for, to replace everything and then 20 laptops to, for use for public, for working from home and, and things of that nature. And then working on trying to figure out the best solution for the jail to continue working while they do the remodel. Well, that's something I'm working on right now also. But other than that, those are the two big things I've got going on.
Did you find anybody to haul all of our junk away?
Not yet. I gotta get with Scott and see if he, he was gonna look and see if the recycler he uses can take that sort of thing. And I haven't spoken with him yet.
There we go.
He just walked in. Perfect timing.
Hey, any other questions for Jeremy?
As far as programs for next year, so have you guys decided on which program for the clerk's office, assessor, you know, everybody, or not assessor, treasurer? Has everybody decided on a program yet? You know, it was in this year's budget to buy that. I think it was anyway. So are we gonna accomplish that?
We were.
Okay.
Yes. There was one other thing that Clerk Miller and myself were looking at. And then as soon as that's done, then we're gonna pull the trigger and move forward. So we will get it done, get it started in this much year.
Hopefully they'll show up the same time the new computers do.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully.
That'll, that'll be a little bit longer of a transition, but even, even computers are gonna be, once I pull the trigger to order them, it'll be a month or two. It's still pretty hard to get stuff.
Yeah.
It's made everybody happy. They have computers.
But we've got to figure out a way to, where to go with the old stuff.
Yeah, I gotta get, find a way to get rid of that old stuff.
If we need a trailer, rent a, put it all in and take it to recycling in Boise, I think we could do that too.
Yeah, that's good.
You know, they take them down there off, what is it? Tinner Boulevard, they have a big electronics recycling place there, so just have to pay to have it hauled down.
Right.
Take a big trailer.
Yeah, I would.
Okay, any more questions? All right, thanks. Have a great day.
Thanks.
Uh, Cindy.
Hi.
Morning.
So we'll get the action item, the history wall timeline off the agenda first. So y'all received a picture of this. I took it up in Hayden. I would like your blessing to proceed with this as time allows. And we'll get people to give us pictures and I'll work, have to work with Doug or facilities, Scott probably. Where do you envision it? Down the hallway.
In which hallway?
Well, that's what we're gonna work on.
Oh, okay.
Well, Cindy, I think you're gonna need some funds, not a lot, but you're gonna have to buy frames and wall hangers and.
Yeah.
And there's some people are gonna say you can have a copy, but I don't wanna give you my, my original. So there'll be some charges to copy that. But I think this, this is really awesome because we've kind of got a little wall out here across the lobby here on some of that. But there's thousands more pictures of.
With these smaller ones, it'll give you the ability to pay more.
It's a great idea. I think it would be.
They didn't have frames. They just had like a matte back on them so that they were similar.
A great idea to replicate some of it and put it up in the annex too, if there's a hallway up there.
We could just ask people if they want to give some pictures. I mean, I've got some really great pictures. I'm sure you do help.
Yeah, I have tons of that stuff. Some of it's color, some of it's black and white.
Instead of, you know, the big pictures, I wish it took up so much space.
Well, we gotta set it up so that you can take them off to paint the wall and that kind of stuff. So I think it's gonna cost a little bit of money, but we can figure it out.
So it won't, I mean, it's gonna take a while. I mean, I don't have the time right now, but we can start, you know, getting people interested.
Well, and I think, you know, it's a part of our heritage, how we got here. So it's kind of important.
History in our historic building.
You guys ever get to Lardo's? Lardo's has some great pictures in Lardo's. Old, old stuff.
Okay, well, on, on to the more serious things. Planning and zoning met with Central District Health and DEQ on March 22nd. And it was Mike Reno and Matthew, and I can't pronounce his last name. But they talked about septic's versus sewers and water quantity, quality, public water systems. I mean, it was a pretty good education for the planning and zoning. It answered a lot of their questions with, you know, the future approvals of subdivisions and things. I would recommend, and it was the first thing on that agenda, so you might want to go watch it yourselves.
I actually had a long talk with Mike Friday at Health District, mainly about compost toilets for lots of won't perk. And he was kind of explaining to me the different requirements because you can't have a water system in a house that has a compost toilet. Which I thought was kind of strange, but what I'm thinking in Cindy is that I would rather see the compost toilets on these camp lots than I would the green outhouses.
In the what?
The, the green outhouses. This has a way, because you're starting to see green outhouses all over the valley now and it's like, nah, it's not a very good look either. So we may want to talk about compost, but according to him, you can't have a water system in your house. It's only water you bring in, dump. And so there's a lot of things that I think P and Z would have to get caught up on if we're gonna go down that route. But compost toilets are approved. Their, Health District has looked at them and they are approved and some, for some uses. And then I think it would take some heat off of our septic pumpers. They don't, you know, that's another issue with the grease that we just dealt with. And talk to him about that. And Eagle is the only place that can take the grease.
Okay, on the compost toilets, I don't know that, you'd have to talk to, ask you to State Plumbing Board, because they regulate what goes in and out. So much in particular health. Central District Health kind of runs from the house, from the septic system. Plumbing jurisdiction goes from the house to the septic tank and from the septic tank on and stuff, Central District Health. So as far as putting compost toilets into houses or something, that might be something we need to talk to.
Well, and he did, but I think it's something that P and Z with, with Health District, kind of the plumbing. Yeah, just to get rid of the green outhouses.
They have jurisdiction to say yes or no. I think more of the State Plumbing Board has that jurisdiction.
That's good to know, because I didn't know that. He did say that the average compost toilet, it starts at 15,000. And go up from there, you have to have a propane service. But I think this is kind of gonna be the wave of future for some of our non-percable lots. You know, and do we even want to go down this road? Do we even want to allow them? That's the discussion I think we all need to have.
And that would be a, a building department, do they issue a building permit with a compost toilet in it? And what they would do is just, you know, look for the approval from Central District Health. Unless we have an ordinance amendment specific to porta potties and compost toilets and incinerator toilets.
Well, the one thing he kept telling me over and over was that they won't authorize a compost toilet for a house that has a well. If it has its own water source, it won't get approved because it's too much water for that system. And they can't handle it. It doesn't work. So I thought, well, that's kind of strange. If we get a, especially out in the wild, wildland urban interface, you don't have a well to put out a fire. It's like, these kind of go against each other, but.
Well, yeah, and that's kind of interesting because, I mean, you could have a well separate from your structure or just not, you know, plum your water into your compost. But that would be ordinance changes and, and a lot of education versus what we talked about on March 22nd. Which was, you know, the things that we're more familiar with, with, which is septic systems, sewers.
And is there, and following up on that, so is there a map anywhere that shows for the P and Z? How, where all of the existing sewer lines are? So that they know exactly how far from an existing sewer line it is when they're looking at venues or all of those kinds of.
Oh, sewer districts? I mean, all you have to do is look at the GIS.
Okay.
The sewer districts are on their private sewers. We don't track. I mean, we have the GIS tool where you can say, oh, well sewer cuts off here. You can measure it. But I think state statute says within 200 feet, you have to connect.
Within 200 feet. Good to know. Yeah, all that stuff's available in all the sewer districts. They have all that, maps of everything.
P and Z is using that GIS map when they are making decisions.
Yes. Well, the staff report definitely provides them with that information, just like you guys get. So yes, they're, they're aware of that. It's always a big discussion. Let's see, I received the application for the 201 manufactured homes on West Roseberry. That's the next phase of the Meadows at West Mountain, but this is coming in under its, a separate planned unit development. P and Z has agreed to set its own special meeting, which is May 5th, so that they can focus completely on this application.
Is there any other amenities with that, Cindy, that you've seen on the application? Is there any parks or?
Well, yeah, there's a, a common area. There's a clubhouse.
Oh, good.
That type of stuff. You know, they don't have the 50%. That type of stuff, you know, they don't have the fifty percent open space and all of that, but the ordinance doesn't actually require that, you have to read the whole sentence. You can't just cut off it at the comma, so. We have a, about a hundred and sixty five short term rental permit applications. And more come in all the time as we pursue those. We have four subdivisions scheduled for April.
Evening Christmas.
May's agenda is mostly just mom and pop stuff, you know, bread shops and machine shops, that kind of stuff. Went to the floodplain conference up in Hayden, it was a great refresher for me. Hadn't taken that class in over twenty years and it it was a really good class. On the, on Annette's stuff, the five story wood structure, City of Boise has a code that allows it. And the state of Washington allows it, and that's what this one is tailored after. Or just those exceptions from or the inclusion in above and beyond what Idabo does for the state of Idaho.
Cindy, those five story do they have to be in central sewer and water?
Yes, I would, yes, absolutely, they're on central sewer and water.
Probably for the water pressure.
Yeah. And, you know, we'll get more into it at the public hearing, but with, you know, if people are afraid that there's going to be a five story, you know, building out on Highway fifty five. Well, that will be determined as part of the planning and zoning process, not the building permit process.
Well, didn't we have that discussion quite a few years back with McCall City, they wanted thirty eight feet or forty feet or something like that, and they came out and said no, that thirty two feet was, or thirty five feet, whatever it is, is the highest we're going to go.
I.
It was a.
I wasn't really involved in that, but I remember seeing, reading, you know, someone wanted like a three or four story building and they said no, and now they're approving those. So it's kind of flowed with the changes throughout the years.
So like if it's along the scenic byway, can we limit the height on the scenic byway, but further out, go higher?
Well, that would be a part of the condition use permit. That's the site specific thing.
And as far as fire, so I know that there are some new, there's been some research done on what you can do for multi-story buildings without having to buy ladder trucks.
A lot of the I know was debate, was based on the insurance companies, insurance companies came in and demanded it. And so they had to do it, but that was for ten and twelve story buildings too.
Yeah, and part of that is the elevators would have generator backups.
Yep.
And the stairwells and stuff were, would be fireproofed and that's the extent of my knowledge.
There's some outside stairways they can include and things like that too, so.
That's part of the statute that Annette's bringing forward. Septic brochures, you know, planning and zoning is all over the septic issues, so. And I know Valley Soil Water Conservation District's very interested in also, but there's been some really great handouts created for septic systems. And we're now requesting homeowners associations to include those in their CCNRs.
Well, good.
So that people buying into subdivisions, you know, that don't, aren't aware of septic systems, you know, or at least educated that by the way, you should pump it every three years and this is how you treat it, don't put these things in it.
Good idea.
Oh, let's see. There's new Valley County groundwater quality improvement drinking source water protection plan, and I have until end of today to review it.
Oh, my gosh.
But it's.
Who put that out?
It's a collaboration between Department of Environmental Quality, IDWR, NRCS, University of Idaho, Central District Health, Department of Ag. I think it's just a compilation of a lot of existing things, I've seen a lot of this information before. And one of the interesting things we learned March twenty second was we are not in a high nitrate area.
Or high phosphate.
Phosphate, yeah.
Phosphorus. Which is natural in the granitic soils.
So, yeah. Anyway, I just recommend everybody watch that.
Cindy, do you have more of those copies of those? Jeez.
I could email it to you.
Um, no, that's okay, I'll come in and get it from you and borrow it, take it home, read it.
Okay.
I don't want that big of a file.
If you can put, if you have that on email, I'd love an email, I'll keep it on.
It's, you know, I haven't actually had time to look through it. I've just kind of flipped through it, but.
Well, I think they talk in there too about water rights and that kind of stuff too. What you can, can't do. Junior water rights and that kind of deal, which they've already shut off a lot of the junior water rights down in southern Idaho this year, they're not even going to get one, one shot at it, so it's going to be.
I've gone to a lot of the drinking water source protection plan seminars and things.
Non-point, point source and that kind of stuff.
Have you worked without, we've had a lot of questions about the wells and, you know, putting new wells in and drying down the water table. And I know that, I'm trying to think which department it is, that's, I think is IDWR is, is researching those wells, the well logs. Have you talked with them at all or asked them to come up and do a presentation for P and Z?
Well, that was part of the DEQ presentation.
It was, okay, perfect. So do you know if they ever got more than three wells up here they're monitoring or?
Didn't say, he, it was more about individual wells versus public water systems and a contamination of those wells.
Okay.
Versus quantity. Maybe the answers are in this book.
Maybe, that's what I would look for.
But leading into that, you know, we had the, P and Z had Central District Health DEQ come up and, you know, educate them on some different matters and the next meeting will be fire departments coming in. They're going to talk about the adequacy of our current wildfire mitigation plan. Maybe some fire wise landscaping, types of roads that are needed to access subdivisions. You know, when they require buried tanks and, you know, the, just the fire district standards. And then I think they should be at a, a pretty good comfort level, level to come up with this new subdivision process. They needed to find out some answers before they actually said who needs septic approvals, who needs, you know, access, who needs power, that kind of thing. So this should be probably the end of that education portion.
And did you think while you're discussing it, it might be at this level, not at that level, but expansion of the fire districts? So that, because there's a lot of Valley County that's not included in any of those fire districts.
That is under the jurisdiction of Valley County Sheriff. Yes, it is.
Good to know.
And she usually asks the adjacent fire departments, fire chiefs to make comment for, you know, like Steve will comment on stuff out on Worm Lake Road that's outside their jurisdiction or Smith Ferry. You know, Juan or Jess will comment in the Donley area.
So if we wanted to see them expand their fire districts, then that would be conversation with the sheriff or just with fire districts?
Fire districts, well, I'm sure the sheriff would be involved.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we need to have that conversation, I think we need to start that conversation.
There's some areas that don't want to be in that district, and that's been the problem.
They don't want fire coverage? I don't think they want the increased taxes and.
Understand that.
You know. And then if, I mean, you get to a certain point and you're not going to get there anyway.
So what, what sparked my thought on that was two hundred more lots on the other side of that S bridge and trying to get the appropriate fire response. I know Tamrac's going to put in a new fire response, you know, new fire department building, but, you know, we need to start eventually thinking about it. How do we get people to all these subdivisions, so.
But that wouldn't be, they're already in the fire district.
Right, right, they're just going to build a fire station, but it's not, they're not going to buy trucks or put people in it, this is just a building, a future fire station, the way I understand it, there's, they're not hiring help and actually occupying it.
Not until their tax base allows for that, they wouldn't.
Right, Sheriff, you want to add something?
I would say, plus, you have to have staff that can respond in a certain timeframe, and so like Smith Ferry would yawn if they had to come from here.
Right.
So they'd have to have people down in that area to be able to respond if they decide they want to fire.
And there are people, at, at the time, the last conversation were elderly, and so they didn't want to be volunteer fired people?
And that's just, I'm just questioning if, if we're looking at this large of subdivisions. The, the fire conversation needs to be a vibrant part of that, how do we get there, how do we get there in time? Where are we located, you know, with eight hundred lots in Donley, what does that look like? Another, McCall's is McCall's deal, but.
I'm pretty sure fire departments are planning for that.
Okay.
They give us response letters and.
They do, so they're.
They go out and look at every site, they work with the developers, yeah, all of that's taken care of through the process. Because we're not the experts.
I just want to make sure everybody's responding in the.
Oh, they do, yeah.
Okay.
And but we have to, you know, the reason we're having them come in and talk to us is so that we at least are educated enough to write a code that makes sense.
Thank you for being thorough.
One of their other homework assignments is they're, they're reading the comprehensive plan. The question is, is it still applicable, does it cover current conditions? Does our ordinance implement the plan and are amendments minor or major? So they can determine whether or not they think we should hire a contract planner. And so that discussion, you know, we've already, you know, talked about it a few times. And they're not comfortable making a recommendation either way at this time. But they're still thinking about it, they're going to thoroughly read that comprehensive plan with those questions in mind.
So Cindy, will they come to us eventually though, before budget, if they decide they need? Okay, just kind of poke them along, make sure we, we get that before budget.
Yeah, otherwise it won't be this year. But, no, they're, they're thinking about it.
Great.
Then they're also thinking about Euclid, Euclidian zoning versus the performance based and what they think needs to happen, and then they're thinking, you know, they had an impact fee discussion at the last meeting, so do we do development agreements, impact fees, LIDs or CIDs?
What was their feeling on the impact fees? Was it split?
They need more information. No, it's kind of a there isn't enough information to make a recommendation at this time. They were being pushed to recommend that they ascertain specific improvements on roads for subdivisions. The majority of the planning and zoning commission don't think that they're the experts in roads. Jeff should be making comments to us and then we will include that in the conditions. They don't want to be the experts, they don't want to go out and look at the roads. Say, oh, this road needs to be improved, that needs to come from our road department.
No, but I think where they would come in is if you've got county road here and a county road here, and this is going to be developed in the middle. We need you to hook those two roads up, that to me is your guys' function.
That's long, long range, yes, absolutely, circulation through the county.
Right, ingress, egress.
Yep, they definitely look at that stuff.
I've put on the agenda for next week on the impact fees, we need to have a conversation about impact fees, I'm getting tremendous. Impact fees are not our future, that we need to be looking at road development agreements and see, you know, get that legislation changed so we can use those.
Yeah, I'm so bummed we couldn't get it done this year, it doesn't look like it's going to happen, but we'll work with Megan next year and see if she can get it. Anything else for Cindy? Um, you, this is an action item on the wall, do you want to motion in a second?
Sure, to let us proceed.
So I'll make the motion, we authorized planning and zoning to proceed with a history wall timeline for the courthouse. Who did second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
But I actually think the recreation department will be working on it.
I think everybody will be.
Sorry, Dave.
I have to add, yeah.
I think that's a stretch for recreation.
Yeah, I got a new guy coming on board, no problem.
He's right out of the mold too, fresh, ready to go, huh?
Yes.
Hey, Larry, go ahead.
What a beautiful weekend, huh?
Yes.
Uh, we started spring maintenance, we're starting Smith Ferry, and then we'll do Cascade. We're also pulling the Challenger off right now because it needs a water pump and I actually went down Thursday, stopped at Western States and I got the last two idler pulleys in existence. We needed one, bought them both, so, and idler pulley could end up being worth a lot of money.
Do you know Larry's an internal water pump or is an external?
External.
Thank God, because I just replaced one on a John Deere and it was thirty two hundred dollars.
Yeah, we've, we've, we purchased the water pump, it's up there, we're going to have Steve start working on it probably next week.
Good.
Uh, and then after that's all done, we'll install the brusher and get ready for spring and summer brushing. We've got two buildings that have a little bit of winter damage on it, so we'll be doing building work again this spring. Also, we're starting to change signs out, we got to go from winter signs to summer signs and it was interesting, this weekend was the all the, all the young guys with new trucks decided they had to drive them up the snowmobile trails and get stuck, so quite a few of them. I, I shared with you guys at the beginning of the legislative session that we were going to try to get an increase on OHV tanks, dollar increase and that would go to the Trail Rangers, plus an increase on the vendor fee. For some reason, it kind of went sideways on us, IDPR decided to sponsor that legislation. And because it was an agency sponsoring it, it never made it out of the Transportation Department. So next year, we will, we, next year it'll be sponsored by the, a user group, and I'm sure we'll get it through. And I'm hoping we can go for two dollars instead of one dollar increase. It's getting very difficult to take care of to take care of, of, of these trail systems, so. And the other, the only other thing I have for you is I'm working with IDPR. I called, you know, the, one of the whole points of having this new vendor system was that we could get our information early so we can build our budget appropriately. I talked to IDPR last week and they said they wouldn't have it to us until the end of July. And that's not appropriate, I, I, I sent an email back, I need that information the first of June, so I can get it put into the budget. And so, I mean, all these years of by guessing, by golly, I thought we're at an end and I'm going to push really hard to make sure it's at an end and we got the right figures.
Good.
And so that's.
Good luck with that.
Wow, thanks a lot. Well, we're, we're going to invite Director Buxton to the Spring Board Meeting and, and that conversation's going to come up. Any questions?
When's the next RRC meeting?
Next what?
Our Recreation Council Idaho.
I'm not sure, in fact, I was going to ask Sandra, she's going to be up next Saturday for the Lincoln Day, so I'll bring that up.
If you, if you get a date, let me know.
Yes, absolutely.
That was worth attending, for sure.
And the ISSA Spring Board Meeting is in two weeks. Another exciting place. At least it's not Rexburg again. But I have anything that gets Rexburg, don't get me wrong.
Were they having a discussion?
We're going to do it in Burley.
Oh. Yeah. Burley Inn?
Yes, actually.
Scott Chapman, is he on board yet?
Yes, yeah, he's the, he's the vice president, yes. Yeah, really excited about that, he's going to bring a, a whole nother perspective, I think it's going to be great.
Hey, any more questions for Larry?
Right now.
You see my letter to Mr. Williams?
I appreciate that, it was well written.
Did you see it too? Is that okay? I'm not the best writer.
Yeah, it was well written, I'll be interested to see the response.
Yeah, see what happens.
All right, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you, we're going to move right on down, our next one is Buildings to Ground, Scott, come on up. Good morning.
Good morning.
What do you want to do first?
Well, get the action item for chipping.
You know, I think that's awesome, it's thirty five thousand to do both piles?
No.
Just because this is C and D year, so I thought, we doing what do you debris too?
No, and that's, from what I understand, when it was seventy thousand dollars a couple of years ago.
That was for.
Both piles.
Right.
Yeah, this is just chipping and hauling of the construction waste.
And then who keeps the check from the mill?
He does.
He does.
Mm-hmm, yep. I think it's kind of offsetting, lowering our cost on the chipping and stuff too. I think, I believe, because I talked to Scott Carnes this morning and I think the most I call has gotten is like, they get like six dollars a ton for stuff to hell over there.
Those come up a little bit.
And also generally chipping piles like that, because it's not really separated. They end up with some damage to their chipper, so you know, something goes through, so that kind of offsets the cost of repairs and stuff, so for this year, I think it's a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
He's bringing up an excavator up there to load it too, isn't he?
What's that?
Isn't he going to bring a?
Isn't he gonna bring an excavator?
Yeah, he'll have to, because yeah, because there's nothing to, to actually put it into the chipper and stuff that uh, I believe, you know, none of the loaders I believe are big enough to really handle it. It's easier to hank with, you know, an excavator with a claw, they can pick it up and.
That's what he was saying. He's, they'll do a lot of sorting when they're picking it up and putting it into the chipper.
So.
My only heartburn on that whole deal is that Lake Shore gets fifteen percent of whatever they charge.
No, he's, uh, Scott said they would waive that this year. The bill will just come straight through as is.
Well, that's awesome because I think we redo that contract, I think we need to look at some of that stuff like that.
Yeah.
They don't have anything to do, why are they getting cut?
Yeah, because we were talking with Scott last week and he was saying even when they burn it, you know, they don't really get anything for that. So kind of this year we're looking at uh, you know, he said they'll just, you know, pass that bill on to us. Um, and then he said he's meeting with his boss, Chris, this Thursday and looking kind of what the solution is for doing that, you know, if uh, Lake Shore wants to buy a grinder and do it or how. Um, so he said he was meeting with his boss on Thursday to look at what we're going to do down the road.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to authorize Icola to grind the construction pile.
I'll make the motion we approve the use of Icola to grind the construction pile.
Second?
Second.
Who did second? Any more? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And good job on that, finding that that's going to save us.
Scott did a lot on that. I gotta give him credit for it. He's kind of the one that carried the ball on that and things and stuff, so.
I'm excited to see their long-term plan. And if we can work with the Forest Service, you know, it's a win-win for all of us.
Yeah. So yeah, like I say, there's, look at kind of what the options are. If we can run it kind of like the recycling, um, where we do get some return for it or you know, they, I don't know if we have the space to really do the composting where they, they put it out in rows and, and turn it and um, mix the grease and oil from the grease traps and stuff, because that's another issue. Um, I did find some of them, boys, he'll come up and pump our, um, our grease trap for us. Um, so uh, but in looking at that, um, the local areas around here have lost um, Clay Peak to dump their grease at. So right now they're really not pumping, uh, you know, like the gentleman from uh, Honey Dippers called me and concerned about it. Uh, and I heard back from the owner of ASAP. He says there's actually state legislation that says each county is required to provide uh, place for the grease.
Well, have him, next time you talk to him, have him send us that code.
I've asked him to do that. Actually, I just called, um, he didn't send it to me the day I talked to him. So I called back last week, um, and, and asked for it again. I didn't actually get to talk to him. I talked to Tim, who answers the phone for ASAP up here. Um, and he said he'd get the information to him. I tried looking it up myself. I couldn't find anything. I did get a call back from Central District Health, so I'm kind of playing, or not Central District, DEQ. Gentleman there, we're kind of playing phone tag right now on, on the, they call it fog, is that's what they call the stuff they pump out of the.
Fog?
Yeah, is what they, is what they pump out of the grease traps and stuff and it's generally all the water that goes from the prep sinks, um, redepart, recompartment sinks. Dishwashers all go into that trying to keep the grease out of the sewer system.
And I thought we had a place in Eagle that would take that.
Well, that's the guy from Honey Dippers. Thought he said, you know, he said there's a place they're taking it. I don't know where this company, their eco systems or something, they have several accounts up there and they, they run a smaller truck. And he said, um, they're just waiting on, we've got most of their vendor information set them up. Um, we got their W nine, we're waiting on their proof of insurance and then we'll get an appointment with them to come take care of the grease trap in there.
Have room on Lake Fork to do something, but that changes the whole system.
Yeah.
I think it's almost got to be burned.
Well, the thing is, you know, I understand over at Clay Peak, they just dug a big pit for them. And then I'm talking with Scott this morning, you know, the thing is we got, it's going to track bears like crazy. Um, then we have an open pit and it's gonna have to have some type of security fence around it because we have someone up there floating brush metal and their child gets on, on a runaway and goes and falls in it. Um, then we have liability issues, so it's gonna take some thought if we're, you know, if we actually required to provide it and if we do, then it's going to have to be some type of secure area so that we try to keep the bears from falling in it and the elk and the deer and, and an individual or something and stuff.
And we'll have to keep the ducks from landing on it.
Yeah.
That's all part of it.
Yeah. But yeah, so um, let's just kind of take some more research and just, and actually find out if it's actually required of us. And if it is, then what the, um, the requirements are to handle it.
Well, if it's state code, it's definitely something we'll have to.
Yeah, I just, I guess I.
I just haven't heard of that.
I tried, I tried to, you know, looking it up and I, I just reached a dead end. Nothing really covered it.
I'll talk to Mike Reno at Health District, see if he knows anything about it too.
Yeah, that stuff, but that's what the gentleman that owns ASAP.
If a private guy like me could take it.
Yeah. I don't know. And there's probably some requirement how you have to handle it.
Probably. I take grenades.
Yeah, I understand that.
Grenades all the time, but I don't know about grease.
Yeah.
Probably a good fertilizer.
Well, what the, the gentleman, no, I'm so bad with names anymore that owns Honey Dippers. A lot of them are, are using John's.
Dang it.
Yeah.
I just went blank.
Um, they're using in their, in their uh, counties that are creating compost. You know, um, they, it's because it's kind of got the enzymes in it. It helps digest the, the stuff and um, so what uh, I think we're a ways away from creating any compost and stuff at this point, I think, so. And then I, uh, I emailed you this morning, a couple of the bids.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Just gonna ask you about that.
And um, for Y cap and we're looking about eighty thousand dollars to do it.
Awesome.
Total, so that.
Well, that's, that's the remainder. That doesn't, about another eight thousand for electrical.
Okay, that's what I was asking. So that adds on to the.
Yeah, and then I need, uh, still getting to get the plumber out because what we want to do, that place um, didn't have a very big hot, hot water heater. It was actually on the second floor and they'd kind of piped it into the system and it was kind of a, a jury rig system. And then when there was a point of use one downstairs. So I'd like to, there's space by the, by the furnace down there to put a fifty gallon in. I'd like to, and there's actually a two-twenty circuit right close that we can use. We don't have to pull another one and put a regular fifty gallon water heater in there and plumb it to the kitchen and the upstairs and, and the downstairs bathrooms.
If you're going to keep the oil furnace?
Yes.
That's still code? We can still do that?
Yeah. And actually, we just put a, we put a new board in it last, uh, this winter, last winter and it, it functions proper, you know.
I don't know if you could use them on a public building? Or carpet tile vinyl.
It's not because of the amount of these?
What's that?
Because of the amount of these? I think we have to put it out for.
Yeah.
Bid. So now that we're getting this back.
Kind of looking at the two of them, there's actually, I'd like to use the both of them to see if they were willing to break their bids out and do certain parts of it. You know, it's kind of like the windows are around twenty-two to twenty-five thousand, uh, interiors running thirty to thirty-five, exteriors around twenty-two to twenty-four. Um, Castle Mountain's talking about scraping and painting it. Um, and then the actual JJT remodeling is talking about wrapping it with a moisture barrier and siding it and painting it. And he's actually cheaper than scraping and painting.
What kind of siding?
He's talking about lap siding.
Oh, like a cement board or something?
Yeah, hard board, hardy board, yeah. And then, and that includes priming it and sealing it and two coats of paint on it. And he's actually cheaper than scraping and painting.
Absolutely.
Um, so I wanted to kind of see if maybe he'd do the siding and then Castle Mountain maybe do the windows, um, kind of break out the, the each, each kind of section of it.
You're trying to, what, what I'm hearing you say is you're trying to make it so both bids will be under fifty thousand.
Yeah. About, and that I just think I'm gonna get a better siding job with JJT remodeling than the scraping and painting by Castle Mountain. Um, uh, just uh.
Oh, JJT's not just electrical. They're, they're looking at it. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, the thing I have, I'm gonna have to talk with um, Jaime who runs, Jaime's, uh, JJT remodeling is the one that painted the whole place last, last year. And uh, but he's got quite a travel fee attached to his down there, which kind of I need to discuss with him.
And this is to remodel the upstairs also?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Upstairs and stuff. So like I said, I don't know if they, I don't know if they'll break it out or anything. And um, if not, then if they don't want to, you know, do certain phases of it, then we'll have to put it out for bid.
You think you'll have it by maybe next week with something for an approval so we can get going?
Yeah, I'm hoping to.
Yeah, that's a good question.
What about also um, the room that dispatch just left?
Yeah.
Where, where do you think on a timeline on that one? Can you have one of these guys work on it or?
Basically, all I really need to do, we got the poles out of the center last week. I disconnected the electrical and took the poles out. I just, uh, I talked to Adventure Flooring and they don't want to come look at anything till you come pick out the carpet, so.
Only put the same stuff in it they put down. Wasn't it them that put it downstairs?
Yeah, and I, I looked at that last week because I'm having a heck of a time with my phone. I'm about ready to ditch it.
You and me both, man. I don't know what's going on with Verizon, but.
Oh, neither. It woke me up at three-twenty with these codes, five of them. And then I got a call after that and I couldn't read it. I thought, generally I get a call at three-twenty or three-thirty in the morning. It's a jail or some, you know, something going on, some emergency here and it says, I answered it and it says, you've been coded. Thank you and hung up. It was a robotic voice and.
You're coded now, huh? You have your own barcode?
What?
You have your own barcode?
Yeah, and then uh, I was uh, I was actually doing an email to Gabby last week to get the Icola deal on there. My phone was sitting on the desk and all of a sudden it downloaded Candy Crush Soda game. Started doing it. I'd take it to.
So that's what's happening in the spare time, huh?
I'm saying that the building, the department productivity went way down.
So I shut it off because I thought somebody had hacked my phone or something and took it to Jeremy and I'm not quite sure what was going on. Said it was coming from Verizon manager and um, he kept the phone and I went off and did something else and it showed back up on my desk, but I did actually in October of last year, I put in a request, uh, ticket for go to an iPhone and I'd like to see if I could set the laptop so I can work from home on my days off and weekends so I can get to my desktop and get to things on there I have there. And I did put that in October of two thousand twenty-one and nothing's really happened with it, so I'd like to.
Send an update?
I put after, I asked about it a week or so ago and I think it was reading, I was confused because I think he thought I was talking about badges and I wasn't, so.
So let's get you on the Jennifer next week on these other two bids though.
Yeah.
And we can nail this down and move on that.
And then um, Rose Advocates has moved out. So I'm not quite sure how you want to proceed on that. I mean, it's, you want to live with some outdated carpet, the paint don't look too bad. You could move into it right now. Somebody could.
Thought that one was in pretty good shape.
Go over after a meeting today and take a look, do a walkthrough with Scott.
Yeah, and um, I mean, it's got a stove refrigerator in it. Um, it's got a small stove. It's about, oh, two-thirds the size of a regular stove, but it's a four burner. It actually looks like the slot that it's in is what it's made for. Never really had like a full-blown um, stove or a, what we consider conventional size.
Does it have an oven or just a cooktop?
Yeah, it's got a cooktop and oven and there's like, so there's a refrigerator in there.
Buy a small turkey.
Bathroom looks in good shape. Clawfoot tub. It's got a halo on it for the, for the curtain rod and um, and everything else. I mean, it's, it's livable. Yeah.
Perfect.
So um, Pod, um, we met last week. There was some confusion on whether we could move stuff or not, but I think it's kind of cleared up. So I just got to confirm that, that we can relocate the um, the necessary essentials they need, their cameras, their, their door operation, their intercoms and lights and stuff and um, and it looks like we're probably going to move it to medical because that might be the easiest. And then Jeremy said he could set them up with laptops to do court in another area. So we can proceed with that. I need to talk with Lieutenant Perry and see and confirm her timeline. Once we give them that information, is it three months and they'll have it? Or is it longer or shorter so we can um, know what we're working with to get our end of things done in there.
So has the furniture company come up yet and looked at it or they're waiting for it to be demoed?
Well, I think we have what they're going to do. Um, you know, that with the contract, that's what we're, what was that layout in there is what they're going to provide.
Okay.
So now we need to get get the pod relocated, you know, so they can continue unlocking doors, turn lights on, off. Monitor their cameras, uh, really important, you know, kind, it's kind of a learning experience in there how important the intercom system is. If a officer's in a cell and he's being attacked, he can call for help or if there's fights between the uh, inmates, you know, they can, you know, notify um, and stuff, so we just got to really make sure we can relocate them in a timely manner and keep things safe for the officers and the inmates and stuff, so. And uh.
We had a request this morning. There may be another employee that we have to find housing for in addition to Rose Advocates.
Mm-hmm.
Where are we on trying to hook up that trailer?
I'd have to get ahold of Brad from Granite or Clayton, uh, talk to one of those guys, one of the excavators and just um, get them over there and see what they are. We know where the water meter is. It's just uh, we've got to find the route. I actually need to talk to Beth that used, from Y cap. I have her grandmother's place and according to her that I guess for her grandmother, they ran a new sewer line and she kind of knows where it's at, so possibly we don't have to dig, you know, and do a sewer tie. There's, there's, there is a tie-in definitely for that lot. It's just uh, locating where they cut or broke the pipe off when they tore the house down and stuff. And then the water meter is actually right where you roll up the door on that shop. It sits right there in the, in the asphalt and stuff. So we've got to, you know, probably have to cut the concrete or that and get down to the connection for that meter and run from there and then run power. So.
You've got a lot on your plate right now. We need to get you some help.
Yeah, I just, yeah, it's right now I'm starting to get a little overwhelmed and things. And I did, you know, Pat did send me an email. I gotta get back with her. She's talking about doing something, uh, because I've, I've got so much uh, stuff to write and get written up, letters out to the sixty-four property owners around Warm Lake. I get the sign made for out there, sixty-four keys made. And then um, Scott did ask me again about a cover for the recycle center, you know, trying to get that into the capital improvement. We know what the cover costs, but I don't know. I need to get the engineer drawings from R and M, which they want a thousand dollars for. So we know how, how much, so a contractor can, can be the foundation that it goes on and stuff.
I feel like you need an administrative person. Um, because my next question is, we have people wanting to rent fairgrounds.
Mm-hmm.
We've got to have somebody that can keep a calendar. I put that on the agenda for next Monday for a conversation, but.
Do you remember who used to do that?
They want to rent it as in what, just as a weekend function or?
There's multiple weekend functions.
Multiple weekend.
You got to figure out who's going to keep that calendar, who's going to, you know, make sure they have all the insurance. And we've just had multiple conversations. Should that be your department, you know, adding an administrative person there for you? Maybe they could do that and keep up on stuff or what does that look like? So put that in your.
I did talk to Rick too from Tri-State. Um, they can um, look at the power requirement because I'm in the Fair Board. Requested that we look for additional power out there for the vendors kind of down that center. He said he could come and, and look at that and give us an idea what they need to do. Or what, what, what's available there, so.
Next Monday, let's have a little conversation on who's going to keep track of that fairgrounds this year, so.
Well, I think we need to get Pat started on getting him some help.
Yeah, agreed.
This week or pretty quick. Even administrative, even, you know.
Whatever that looks like.
Shovel-ready help.
Yeah. And then down to annex, uh, one of the things kind of when we had that leak there, um, the roofers. I looked at this, it's kind of what they call window screening up there. You know, that rubber roof has a fiber reinforcement in it and is the reinforcement wears out, you start seeing the threads and it kind of looks like a window screen, so we may have to um, uh, maybe hopefully all the snow is off it now and stuff. We're gonna have to do an inspection and see if possibly have to replace that roof up there.
Is it the whole roof or can we just hot patch it or?
I don't know. Once, you know, that's, that, you know, it degrades, you know, patching the spots because it's a rubber roof. It's not a, it's not a tower roof, so it's you're going to tear it off, you're going to tear it off and, and do the whole thing.
Kind of like we did these two here a few years back?
Yeah.
You know how long it's been since that?
No, that's probably the original roof.
Yeah, it is. That's my understanding. Yeah, it is. That's my understanding. It is the original roof on it.
Um I don't know when they built that annex.
Ninety-five.
Eighty-five?
Yeah.
Twenty years, twenty-two, yeah.
And look at um doing some landscaping up there too. We have, you know, we budgeted more this year in the landscaping budget and it's. They got them like hearthorn bushes around out there that grab you when you go by and just uh. You know, I know the McCall Police Department would like it to look a little more professional around there and stuff and kinda clean it up, so. Now, we got spring here now. It's on us to start to working on that.
What you work with, like some of the nurseries and come and give us a bit?
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna need a sprinkler system too. I don't know if that's even work.
Well, I think kind of what would decide what we wanna do there. If we wanna just go with keeping the trees alive and go with just a bark or rock that's low maintenance or.
There we go.
What type of bushes. Um you know, we gotta also look at trying to keep the drainage cuz some of the water doesn't, the roof drains do drain out in the corners, especially out front. Get the water away from the buildings, uh the building and stuff. It's it's started coming up around the sprinkler, the water main this year in there and we went in, I went in and sealed that. Here about a month and a half ago when they were replacing the dry heads for the sprinkler system, I sealed that up in there. That's what I did. So um that's briefly what part of I'm working on right now, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah, Tom.
Just to make a comment, uh you mentioned Jaime for remodeling. The hospital just completed a remodeling project and we used Jaime for it.
Yeah.
So if it helps, you can go look at the work. You can talk to Dan who oversaw the project.
That's what I understand. Dan was very happy with his work and stuff and uh I know the painting he did here was great. He even. Reconstructed some of the concrete sills out here under the windows, very talented, um good worker. They they get here and get it, got it done.
That's that's the big thing right now.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the hardest part.
Hey, thanks Scott. We're gonna move right on down. Our next one is the presentation of Cascade Medical Center.
We take a quick break.
Need a break?
Sure.
Okay, we'll be back in about six minutes.
Very good. Give me time to get the thumb drive up and running.
I bet it takes you longer to do that. Yeah, let's uh, we can just put it in that laptop right there.
Hit work?
You don't know?
Process, I think. Dave was right. It may take me longer than it does for your biology book. No, I think. Your angle's all wrong on this side.
Yeah.
You go to the groom's side of the church. To see the presentation.
So Tom, whenever you're ready. Thank you, welcome.
I'm ready. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for making time on my agenda today. I wanted to accomplish three things. I wanted to update you on the latest plans that we have for the hospital, including some of the details. Of the building itself to answer any questions that you might have. And I brought two smart people with me, David Donahue and Terry Coombs. David's our CFO, so questions about financing the project, you can answer, and then Terry can answer anything that's medical related.
Terry, I got this. Oh, never mind. I'll I'll get to you later.
And three, uh open to any suggestions that you have, ideas, uh criticisms, thoughts related to the project and how we can best serve the health and well-being of our community. So I just obviously wanna start with a map. Uh obviously, it's a map of Valley County. Uh you identify what is in the green. Outline of the map.
That includes Big Creek and Edwardsburg and all that too.
Yeah.
Yep.
So our tax district.
Taxing district.
Yeah, our tax district is huge. It's a couple of states in size. Um now, most of it's national forest and so forth, but we cover a large geographic area. There's about four thousand full-time year-round residents today. In our tax district and then about two-thirds of the homes in our tax district are second homes, so in terms of weekenders and that kinda thing. They add another twelve thousand or so people. Uh and then on top of that, you've got visitors and tourists, so these are the people that we serve.
The Tamarack is in your district.
So the tax line runs right through the fourth uh the fourth post of the main Tamarack chairlift. So uh everything to the uh north of the Tamarack Express Lift is in the McCall Hospital Tax District. And everything that is south is in ours. So the village is in ours and all that new expansion area is in ours, which we're really happy about. So uh why are we building a new hospital and how will it benefit our community? First of all, more capacity. Uh if you've ever gotten uh treatment in our physical therapy area or if you've had to come to our ER in the summer, you will know we are flat out of room. Uh and we need more space just to treat the people that we see today, uh let alone any growth that might happen. And I don't know if you've heard, but. The county is growing and uh more people uh will certainly move here once we find enough people to swing hammers to build the houses that are planned. So we need more room just to do what we do today, let alone adding new services, and that's something that's really important to us. We wanna be able to do more for the people who live in our service area. Uh one of those things is surgery, so you'll see in in a few slides. We've got a layout of the building that includes a twenty-two hundred square foot surgical area. Uh certainly, uh we love that Saint Luke's McCall does surgery. Uh we need them to do surgery. We sent a lot of people there to get surgery. But they don't do all kinds of surgery and there's more surgeries that can be done within Valley County. The volume is there, the efficiencies are there. If we only have the facilities and can recruit the surgeons up from the valley, uh not necessarily even full-time, but one day a week. Have a uh ophthalmologist come up and do cataract surgeries. There's plenty of volume for that kind of work to be done and we'd like to be able to give our. Residents that opportunity. Um we do physical therapy, quite a lot of it in fact, about five thousand visits a year, but we don't do occupational and speech therapy. We'd like to be able to add those, not only for inpatients, but for outpatients. Um you know, we have the mammal bus come up uh from Saint Alphonsus. There's mammography at Saint Luke's in McCall. Uh but as we look over the next ten, twenty, even fifty years, we're gonna have to have more cap- capacity than we have today. And certainly there's a need for that in Cascade. Uh colonoscopy, uh so any of us who are fifty and better know that that's a gonna be a regular and important occurrence for us. And it's something certainly that there's enough volume for in our tax district. And then other specialty care. We have cardiologists come up uh monthly now, but neurology, uh all the other ologies. There's a great need to have them come here so that all of our patients don't always have to drive to Boise to get specialty care, especially if it's cognitive care. Like that, so certainly we are eager to do that, but we simply don't have the space to do it today. And finally, we're an economic driver for our community. Absolutely, you've got the county, you've got the school, you got granite excavation and the hospital. I think those are the four big drivers of our local economy. Our median wage is over thirty dollars an hour. Uh and uh I'd hire more people if I had the space for them. Fifty-seven of our sixty employees live and spend in this county. And uh and even though pricing, even though housing is expensive, because the average wage that we pay, people we hire are able to move here. Uh and and live here. This is how we're designing, these are some of the guiding principles that we focused on as we design our new hospital. First of all, quality. Obviously, people want a safe, modern facility in which to receive medical care. Uh and uh our our facility is pushing fifty, uh which is about as old as a hospital should be. Uh before we really run into uh problems meeting the standard of care for facilities and what's expected in healthcare. So uh we we endeavor to build a modern, safe and accessible uh building that supports excellent quality medical care. Uh two, healing. I mean, we're blessed. We live in a, we live in a beautiful area. If we can incorporate those natural elements into the building. Then we can provide better care. Research has proven that a a healthcare environment incorporates natural elements. That brings in natural light into the building, patients have better outcomes. So you'll see in a in a bit where we've placed the site and how we've positioned the building on the site incorporates those natural elements. And then finally, you know, this is, is this about patient care? But you can't give patient care unless you have good, engaged. Joyful employees and that is harder and harder to do all the time in every industry, especially in healthcare. So we've built elements into this that bring joy to the people who work there, that allow them, when they work in a twelve-hour shift, they don't feel like they're in a cave. But rather, they're in an environment that is joyful. So I think you know by now that the location uh that we've selected is in the old railroad loop, about half a mile north of the Catholic Church. Uh the city of Cascade Boundary is right there at the um Crown Point, this uh Parkway there that just above the church. Uh and we're about a half mile north of that. We wanted to bring the hospital, ideally, we build the hospital inside the. City boundaries, but we just can't find the acreage necessary to do that. So we had to go outside the city boundary, but we wanted to keep it as close as possible because it's expensive to run water and sewer there. So this is the best uh location that we could find. And and it turns out to be a really good location because it sits uh on a little rise. It's about fourteen feet above the level of the highway. So it'll be visible uh to people trying to find the lo- find the location and it provides good views from the hospital to the east mountain.
Have you talked with ITD already on your access points there?
Yeah, we we first started talking with ITD a year and a half ago, got some input from them. Uh and and now we are in the process of engaging a traffic engineer to do a traffic impact study.
Question, Tom, real quick. Who owns the ground between you guys and the church?
Uh it's Davis Cattle Company.
Well, it's not you guys. You can buy a curb down to Crown Point Parkway.
Right, so.
So there's some opportunity there for growth too.
Here, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, so it's gonna be sewed and watered.
So this is all Davis uh Cattle Company here and it's all Davis Cattle Company here. So once we bring water and sewer and we have had um uh engineering. Do a detailed study for us, same engineers that the city uses, on what it would take and how best we can get water and sewer across the river, across Warm Lake. And across the highway to this site and um uh and it's about two point three million for water and sewer combined. Uh on today's prices, which you know, that's a different conversation. Um and and it would supply uh to this location, so you're right. Now, th- this area would certainly be, and and the church for that matter, would certainly have access to water and sewer.
Tell them you're a nonprofit and the more they donate, the bigger tax break they get.
May being?
Whoever does your water and sewer.
There you go.
I wonder who that would be.
Also, I've had any more comments or questions on the location?
I'm a little concerned with the ITD access there. I mean, I just looking at the backup of traffic that we currently have. So it'd be something I'd really concentrate on is what that looks like.
Yeah. In the current design, and you'll see this a little bit more in in the next couple of slides, we're focusing on adding turn lanes in both directions. To the main entrance of the hospital and having enough ingress, key ingress from those turn lanes so that a backup won't occur. That said, in the future, it may be uh whoever would develop the private property that is currently between the church and the hospital. It is anticipated that an access road this way that connects to, is the point of argument of that is called. Um would be advisable. Okay, so here you see those turn lanes. And then the the distance across here, this uh this would be the future access road that could bring in other turn lanes. North and south of the hospital site. Uh this is the circulator around the hospital. Our helipad would be located here. My flight says great place for it. Um patient parking up front. Employee parking on the side roughly doubles the number of spaces that we have today. Uh the terracotta color part of the building is what we would actually build on day one. It's thirty-two thousand square feet, almost triples the amount of space we have today. Uh and then these brown uh squares are future expansion zones, which you'll see in another slide coming up. This is the main entry, drop-off here, parking here. Eighty-five percent of our business will come through these doors. Uh then about ten percent of our business will come in through the ER walk-in right here. And then the rest through the ambulance bay. So here's a a lot more detail about what will be inside the building. So we'll start here with the main entrance since that's where most of our patients enter. So this is a large vestibule. Which will have an atrium to bring light in. You'll see that in a moment. Uh but the intention is to, it's wide, open, light, bright, uh comforting, and this is also where we would have waiting areas. Plenty wide enough for that. Uh physical therapy here with expansion ten, twenty years down the road to the north. Clinic here. Behavioral health here, here and here, expansion over to the north again. Public conference space for diabetic education and other health education classes. And lab, which is another major outpatient ambulatory service that we provide. People just come in for lab work once a week or what have you. And then over here from that walk-in ER entrance, you've got medical imaging, CT, X-ray and few in the future. Mammography and whatnot. It will expand in the future right here and into admin. This is the surgery center. These two are slightly different color because these would are dual-purpose. These would be ER patient rooms. When we have our high-peak volumes in the summer, weekends and holidays. So without them, we have three ER treatment areas. We have the trauma bay here, which can uh treat two patients at once. Our accents, that kinda thing. These are two regular ER treatment bays. And then these are the extra two that would be used for ER uh during those weekend periods. And then when we're doing surgery, they would provide pre and post-surgical like prep and recovery.
You guys have a mental hold room?
We do. So this room here. We do. So this room here would be our safe room. Everything, you know, doors roll down, and nobody can hang themselves on anything.
Good. I'm glad you're planning for that.
And then we have two nurses' stations. This one would be the one that is the first one people would approach when they come in, either ambulatory or from the ambulance. And then this nurse's station provides that eyes-on support for the safe room right here, as well as for other inpatients that we may have. And then this area is what I call the backstage, off-stage area. This is for employees, provides some basic infrastructure like laundry and central supply, kitchen, food service, and then our engineering areas back here, and then employee lounge with an outside area for employee lounge. And here's a future expansion for those off-stage services as well. If the inpatient area has to grow in the future, this is the direction they'd grow, and there's more room to grow to the south. And then if ED has to grow in the future, it would grow this way. So it's obviously triple the space we have today. It provides a great deal more space for us to grow immediately, be able to absorb the demand that we're not able to get to. But it also provides an avenue in thought about in 30 years where we'll be able to expand without having to build a new building or relocate to a different site. None of that will be necessary. This will be on eight acres. This fits on eight acres. The benefit of being on, of building on a greenfield site is we can continue our current hospital operations for the next three years while we're building this without interruption. Once we're in the new site, it's all on one level, no stairs, no elevators, and departments are next to each other, providing a lot of operational efficiency and adjacencies. And then if in 60 years they need to build more, then there's land on either side.
That's awesome. So you're buying enough for that future expansion now?
So we're buying...
Is there a lease option?
On day one, and then an option to buy more. There's a limit to that, of course. The landowner's not going to want to have it tied up for what if forever. So there'll be some number of years that they'll have to exercise the option.
And then the old hospital becomes a retirement home?
[laughing]
Putting it on record, Tom.
Okay.
We need senior housing up here.
You think you'll be ready to move in by then?
Yes, I might be ready to move in.
You know I will be.
I don't want to have to leave Valley County when I need to move in someplace.
You know, Sherry, it's funny. I'm so excited about this, and I get done presenting, and then the only question I get is, well, what's going to happen to the existing hospital?
We're excited about this, too.
Please.
We're excited about this, too.
It'll be somebody else's decision, but you know, it's end-of-life as a hospital, for sure. There's a lot of life. The building's got good bones. It's going to be something great for something else.
This is beautiful. I'm so excited for the residents here. You guys deserve to have an upgraded facility. I mean, with the St. Luke's expansion in McCall, we're going to have great, you know, opportunity up there. And I think the southern end of the valley also deserves great healthcare opportunities.
Yeah.
I'm excited about that.
Good. So from a bird's-eye view, this is what the facility will look like. This red stripe is that future access road. Meantime, cars will come in and out of here. This is that atrium area right here where the light comes in. There's windows on the other side as well. It's a shed roof, so this is the taller of the two sides. So that light will come down into the vestibule and waiting areas. And then this area is sort of that's engineering shed up top where we'll have rooftop HVAC units and that kind of thing.
So in looking at that, Tom, is there any conversation about an emergency light there? So if you guys have, you know, an ambulance that needs to turn left on the Fourth of July?
Oh, I see what you're saying. So no, at this point, that'll, I'm sure, come out of the ITD and traffic study. Yeah.
Like fire department normally, you know, I mean, you're going to have traffic.
Dave's going to get out with a flag and an orange vest.
He's going to have to do something because you're going to have traffic backed up. You can't get out.
Sheriff, can we just call your guys to come out and block the road?
I don't know. You know, and that's an interesting conversation for ITD because normally you can't block a state highway, you know. So, I mean, you all have to think about those really, I'm every weekend, the peak season, if they see an ambulance coming out, you'd think somebody would stop and let you out, but God only knows in today's world.
That's a great point, Sherry. Okay, well, we have that on the list.
Yields on coming ambulances?
Something.
As you're standing on the highway looking east, this is how it would look. Again, there's that 14-foot rise from the highway, so this is a pretty good depiction of how it will look. And driving south, that's what you see. Driving north, that's what it looks like. From the parking lot, that's sort of the ground level. Intend to use sustainable materials that last a long time and are fire-resistant and so forth. So the light stone is intended to be corried from southwest Idaho, and you see that, like where the emergency sign is. The brown is heavy-duty aluminum from a company called Knotwood that is sort of stamped with that wood-green texture, but is got that baked-on paint and lasts for So how are we going to pay for it? So we've gotten two estimates so far, and the last one was done in November. $27 million is the all-in price. That includes site acquisition, dirtwork, construction of the building, water, sewer, equipment inside the building, and so forth. We're very nervous about the rising interest rate environment and supply chain problems, not to mention the inflation of labor. So we added $7 million on for contingencies. That brings us to $34 million. We'll be able to fund half of it through our own operations, part through revenue that we've already saved. Got a couple of million to put into the project on day one. And then the banks, David has been working with a number of banks to secure loans, and based upon our track record of consistent positive bottom-line results, banks will fund us for another 15 to 19 million. But that's still not 34 million, and so we feel like we have to go to the voters to ask for help in funding the other half of the project. So as you know, from what's already been in the newspaper, we're asking the public in May for a general obligation bond for up to 19 million. What that means in terms of the regular, us regular property owners, is $68 for every $100,000 in taxable property value. I know you guys know what that means, and I'd appreciate any advice you have about how to communicate that tax burden to people. It's, you know, we were trying to figure out how we could do this without increasing taxes. No one likes more taxes, but this is the only way to get the project done, is by doing a levy. The way that we sort of think about it in terms of an average city of Cascade home, this is an actual example, $425,000 home according to Zillow, and the county assessed the home at $279, take the homeowner's exemption off that, and their taxable value is $154, so it's about $10 a month for the next 30 years to support the building of the new hospital. That's assuming we use all 19 million, which most people will assume, so...
I think that's pretty reasonable. I mean, I don't know what the school is, but it's like 34 bucks, $100,000, I think, right now for Cascade. I'm going to have to look. That's a good deal. Is there anything we can do as the county to help? Any permits or anything like that we could help with reducing those permits?
Well, I'm not even sure.
I don't even know if the county...
What I should ask for.
This will be annexed into the city correctly, or correct, or will not be?
We will request the city to annex it. I have presented the city council to let them know that we are going to request annexation. Doesn't make sense to do that until we get the project funded, but once it's funded, we will request it to be annexed. I think it makes sense that it lies within the city. The long-term maintenance of water and sewer, which are city systems, should be owned by the city. And we will, we will, and have asked the city to partner with us in asking for grant funds for expansion and improvement of water and sewer.
So does the city capacity, is it there for this type of, in addition to the sewer plant?
Yes. So the sewer is definitely there. Water, the city's going to run out of water with or without this project. So first of all, the hospital is moving. Yes, we're growing. We're going to consume more water. We're going to produce more sewage when we move, and we're bigger, and we're growing. But we use disproportionately more water than the average business because we're washing our hands all the dang time. And so it's, so there's definitely enough sewer capacity in the system. They're going to have to deal with drilling another well, as I'm sure you know, in the next couple of years, anyway.
There's actually a well that's south of the Catholic Church right now that Davis has used to pump water.
From the one from the lake or a different pump?
No, it's a different well.
Oh, it's a well.
Yeah, it's between Catholic Church and the bridge, and it's on the upper side of the road. It's not a city well, but I mean, that's something that you could think about as far as maybe get you through until they do it, you know?
We have engaged an engineering firm to do onsite water and sewer as well, in case it doesn't work out for the city to do it. But we've completed the site, or we've completed the engineering analysis if we were to extend the city's systems to this.
That makes the most sense because there will be growth around you. If you locate up there, that's a great place for a business park.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Light industry, other kind of commercial enterprises.
I think this is great. This is exactly what we need.
Great. So you said, is there anything the county can do? We would love the county to write a letter that tells the world it's a great idea.
Sure.
So inclined, if you're allowed to do that. I don't know what you're allowed to do. That would be wonderful. We'll need permits, for sure. I don't know, you know, they may come from the city if we're successful in annexation beforehand.
Yeah, I'm guessing the city's going to be all those permits.
Yeah.
I'm writing myself one up.
We would have to put it on the agenda for an action item to approve a letter of support.
Okay.
Or we could do it individually, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Without that, so...
Great.
My guess is just to keep us in the loop, and if there's anything we can do to help, let us know.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
Good luck. I'm excited for the hospital district. I think...
I've got a question for you, Tom, real quick.
Yes.
Jeff, will you come up to them?
Yeah, Jeff.
Perpetua is looking at widening that Warm Lake Highway intersection out with your water and sewer. Make sure it's back out of the way.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, we are going to have to cross Warm Lake Road with that. We need to cross east enough on the river to get out of the rock so that we can go, and then so we'll be crossing Warm Lake.
Okay.
That's a good point because they'll have a wider road.
It'll be buried deep enough. It's just going to be surface work that my, or Perpetua's going to be doing, so something to keep in mind.
Thank you. Yeah, and we have met with Perpetua to try to understand their plans around the intersection.
Oh, okay.
And if there was an opportunity to collaborate, but I think where our hospital will be is just far enough away from
Right.
that intersection to make collaboration.
But if you're going to have a turn lane right there for northbound traffic turning into the hospital, you're going to have a turn lane, I hope. I was trying to see it on your picture there.
Absolutely.
But ITD's going to come up with that on their traffic plan, but that really needs to be knocked down to 50 miles an hour or even 45 dang near all the way to the state shed.
Or extend the 35, which I think would be the safest.
Yeah, yeah. Their traffic study will figure all that out, but I just wanted to, you've already talked to Perpetua about their intersection plan, so...
Too bad you can't cross the highway before you get to Warm Lake. Then you don't have to cross another highway when you get over there, you know, be on the west side of that before you get to Warm Lake. There's just too much rock there, huh?
You're talking about water and sewer traffic?
Water and sewer.
Yeah, it's just too, it's, yeah, like at the bridge. We wanted to strap the lines to the bottom of the bridge, but ITD says no because of weight of, it was meant for dry utilities, not to hang wet utilities. So then they, and then to go under the bridge, you have to go so deep because of all of the years of water coming out of the dam and just sort of scouring out all the soft material. Now you're just, you're going through granite deep down under the river. But you go a little bit farther downstream, and it's all that silt, the stuff that's been washed out. It's pretty shallow, and you get across it.
Oh, I see. So you're going to go down quite a ways from the bridge, come across the river that way. That makes sense, yeah. Okay, any other questions for Tom? Dave or Eric, you guys have anything you want to add?
Thanks, guys.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
My pleasure.
Thanks for the update.
Tom, would you mind emailing me your PowerPoint presentation so I can just append it to the Commissioner's meeting minutes in case anyone asks for the presentation?
Happy to.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on down to our agenda while Tom's unwinding. Jeff, you want to come on up?
Mr. Chairman, the 1130 Indigent Charity, we do not need that today, so...
Oh, that's good, you know. So we got lots of time. Morning, Jeff.
Morning.
Enjoy your vacay?
Yeah, it wasn't long enough. They always say you got to take two weeks because it takes you a week to get wound down. I finally wound down about Wednesday, and then we came home Saturday, so...
Oh.
It was good, though. I needed it bad. I don't know if I got the right...
You want to do your action item first or last, or?
Oh, it's on the second page. Let's do that one first. Right now, I've got two vehicles on the auction block that you guys okayed for me to surplus last year. They're on, they're up right now on the auction block. This is another one that we just readied. It's an X patrol car, 180,000 miles on it. It's a 2012 Ram.
Better get some of these gone before you get eight more and have to find a place to park. So 120,000, 120 or 180,000?
180.
Okay, so it's not really good to go anywhere else either.
No, it's, it's tires to that age. I mean, we strip all the lease stuff out of it, and then we spend two weeks putting all our stuff in it and run it for a year and then get rid of it.
Okay, so I entertain a motion to authorize this permission?
A move to allow permission to surplus a 2012 Dodge Ram 1500.
I'll second that.
Please, second in all favor, please, Eli.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Quick update on the Stibnite repairs. I've got a meeting at 1:00. We've come up with final option for one of the repairs up there. We're not going to do the repair. We're going to move the mitigation up Profile Creek, put some gravel down up there, put a covert in, instead of ripping all that riprap out right at the intersection of Profile Road and Stibnite. We're going to move up the road about four miles and do some mitigation up there to...
Way up there.
Satisfy the national fisheries up there at Missouri Ridge Trailhead.
And then we'll get our FEMA money?
Yeah. It should start coming here pretty quick because that's what the meeting is today. We brought engineering firm called StanTech back online. They did the original biological assessment for that whole thing. So we've got them on, I'm not going to say on the hook, but I think they've agreed to finish the BA now that we've got final mitigation lined out. That should start cutting money loose.
So that on Missouri Creek, is that a bottomless covert or just a small covert or what is it?
Well, there's a, there's a bridge right there, Profile Creek Road, Edwardsburg Road, whatever you want to call it, crosses a concrete bridge. Then it goes uphill pretty steep. We're getting a lot of sediment from the top of the hill down to the bridge, and it's going in the creek right there. Then it goes uphill pretty steep, we're getting a lot of sediment from the top of the hill down to the bridge, and it's going in the creek right there. We're gonna install a culvert, put some good gravel on the road that won't wash out, that's, that'll satisfy the National Fisheries.
How big of a culvert, must be pretty big.
No, it's just an eighteen inch, it's just a drain, it's just a drainage culvert.
Okay.
So instead of letting the head of water come down the ditch, that last five or six hundred feet and take it straight into the creek, it's gonna cross the road and, and go out through a, kind of a riparian area out there. Lose all the sediment before it hits the creek.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's, that's good. Can't remember if I told y'all that we don't have to pay the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars match on East Side Drive Bridge.
It's coming out of state.
You were in a meeting or something, so this, I think it's the ARPA money. With that coming in, we don't have to pay a dime on the construction side of putting that bridge in.
So this is the county ARPA money or is the state ARPA money?
It's the state, well, it's the stuff that's going to this bridge infrastructure.
Oh, okay, bridge money.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So Keller and Associates has been our engineering firm on this. They've done such a good job, got everything done, it might get bumped up to this fall.
Oh, good.
Two years sooner than planned. That, that's not in stone yet, but it's, there's a good chance that'll happen this fall after Labor Day. Everything's moving, moving along on that. We're just busy springtime fixing, patching, crack sealing. Once the roads heal up a little more, we'll start doing some serious blading on them.
Just starting to pump water now.
Yep.
I think we're ways out for.
We're a ways out, we're hitting some roads and just kinda cuffing the potholes in, but we, you don't wanna break that crust that's on top. Other than that, breakup limits are out. I've got people, I'm gonna get ahold of LTAC and see where that breakup limit stuff came from. It's seven thousand pounds per axle, and there's a placard below it that says eighty thousand pounds max. Break, you break that down, it, trucks got.
Eleven axles.
Got eleven axles on it.
Doesn't happen.
I don't know where these numbers came from. So, and there's people complaining to me, the road department, about watching these heavy trucks going down Wisdom, West Valley, West Mountain. Who enforces it, I don't have scales, all I can do is call the contractor and say, it looks a little heavy. But eighty thousand pounds, a ten-wheeler's legal to haul fifty-six thousand pounds. So if they're loaded to the hill, they're legal according to that placard that's underneath it.
I think the only time I remember issues was cement trucks. You know, like cement trucks were always.
Cement trucks are heavy.
And then they put that triple overweight axle on the front of the drivers, and that was supposed to take care of that. And that was a long time ago.
Yeah, I, I don't know where this, I gotta get ahold of LTAC this week and see where those numbers came from, they, they don't make sense in my head. And the, the only state officer that actually enforced that was Vic, she's retired, she's the only one that ever carried scales, and she would pull people over and put them on the scales.
She carried scales? How do you carry scales?
Horrible scales.
Like a pad you drive.
It's gotta be perfectly flat, it's gotta be paved, and she puts them out underneath the tire and have the truck pull up on there and give them weight right there of what's axles weigh, what each, yeah.
We need to talk to ITD or ISP or something to try and, you know, get them to.
Thing is, state highway, that's all ITD deals with, and there are no weight limits on this highway. So they can come up weighing a hundred and twenty-three thousand pounds and touch our roads, and I, I don't have a badge or a gun, so I don't think I can really go up there and. I can advise them, they look heavy, but they're gonna say, well, weigh me.
Interesting.
I can't weigh them.
Unenforceable rules.
It, it's a, you know, the, the older contractors around here, they, they understand, hey, we don't wanna tear these roads up because then we're gonna have a bad road for ten years. Most of them do, some, some don't, some will sneak by and haul a load of sand that's super heavy, like concrete. As long as it's down below the bang boards, I wouldn't know what they're hauling except for watching the back of the truck bounce on the frost eaves. So we're doing a little bit of hauling here and there, doing repairs, but we're, we're hauling light. I don't wanna break our own rules, but what are our rules? I don't understand them, so I gotta, I gotta figure out what's going on there so I can tell people.
What is your plan for Smiths Ferry bypass when they start shutting the highway down? Same as last year?
We'll go in there and blade it soon as the snow's off of it, and then we're off of it.
So then where, are they gonna have people sign up that can use it?
It should be the same list that we've always had, and if somebody else wants to get on it, they have to.
Those guys have the list down there, they, I mean, that's, list is still around somewhere?
Oh, yeah, I've still got it on my desk. They've added a few people to it, and, you know, like the vet's office wanted permission to use it, and.
It's not, we're probably, what, another couple of weeks before we're even gonna touch that road?
I, I would think it'd be end of April sometime, yeah, so a couple, three, four weeks, maybe.
Yeah, strike March is almost gone already.
Yeah, I mean, that's just the start of it, I mean, we're looking at the rest of the canyon one of these years, so it's just gonna be an ongoing deal for.
Was it this year they grind from the head of the canyon to one oh eight? Is that this year? Which is right in the middle of my place where they stop.
It's gonna go from the head of the canyon up Round Valley, over Harrick Hill, and stop right at Alpha, I believe. And that's where you should notice that the road's pretty good till you hit Alpha, and then all of a sudden it just.
Well, it's really interesting because, um, they just did that road like eight years ago? Eight or nine years ago, they.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
They ground it, mix it with concrete, and re.
Cut the crabs in it.
And, boy, it didn't last very long.
I'm all base. I mean, look what happened up between Donley and McCall.
Oh, boy.
The pavement held up, but I think all those years with the cracks and the deteriorating asphalt and that salt solution getting into the sub-bays, it, I don't know. Most of those bumps have been there since I was a kid because we used to love sitting in the back of the car or back, or pick up in the back of the bus and.
Yeah, catch some air.
That's what's wrong, you hit your head.
Yep, yep, yeah, that's what happened, one of the few times I've hit my head.
So I have a question for you, and, and I do wanna meet with you on Wednesday, I have a few questions that have come up while you were gone, but. The RFP that we just did doesn't have any road base repair.
Nope, just milling and repaving.
Okay. And the question that had been brought up, and I, I guess I didn't catch it in time to have this discussion with you, but we're asking a developer to do something, we should be doing the same thing. And are we asking a developer to build a road standard that we're not doing ourselves before putting pavement on it?
We haven't asked them to rebuild the road, we've just asked them to repave it.
That's what I'm asking, so.
Yeah.
Let's find time on Wednesday to sit down and visit.
Yep, I mean, it's.
Lots of concern out there.
If we wanna bring it up to standard, it's not just the base, it's doing hundred-foot rightaways and everything else, so.
There can be a waiver on the rightaways because that's what I thought we were talking about, but.
Do you remember?
We gotta make sure that we're not gonna have the same issues that ITD does, I mean, we need to build roads that are gonna last.
When we did Harrick, rebuilt the base on that road, how much was that, do you remember?
Just came across it, I think just the base material was about three hundred thousand dollars.
It's more for basin than it is for pavement, isn't it?
No. No, the base is pit run, it's a lot cheaper.
And that's the softer rock, I'm assuming, in the pit?
No, that's the big, heavy, hard rock.
Which is our best rock.
Put our fabric down, put whatever, our standards on a major collector, I think, are twelve, twelve inches of base, and put crush on it, and then you pave it.
Need to talk about that, we may have to put that as a topic of discussion here surely, but I know that the Road Advisory Board is gonna be discussing that.
Yep.
I know Jerry's pushed on it, kinda pushing back on it, but, you know, it's just money.
I mean, we can always back out a little bit and just overlay those roads for now, like we did on East Lakeport, until we can get the money to buy rightaway and do a full, permanent fix on them.
We do need to have a conversation. Um, and then, I don't remember, but remember we were discussing the road levels that we were actually giving to P and Z and requesting that something be built with standard of one through five? I don't think that we ever completed that work, and.
Oki sent me something, uh, it was this winter sometime, it was broke down into eight different road levels. That was just kind of a, well, it must've been last fall because winter hit, and then it just kinda got stuck underneath the pile.
Okay.
I came across it when I was reorganizing my desk here a couple of months ago.
We need to work on those and get those completed, if there's something that we can do to help with that.
Yeah, let me go through it, and then I'll, I need to go through it a little more now that we're in springtime and I'm not worried about snow removal.
And then as far as, so has Brian worked with you all to do some kind of a road language to the Planning and Zoning Commission? I mean, something that's the same for all subdivisions, have you guys talked about that at all yet?
Seems like me and Brian and Sendive threw some stuff around, but nothing really got ironed out. But actually, that was RDA stuff.
Um, I have a question for you, Jeff, when Tamarack came in here a while back, Chris and, and Scott, we were talking, and they said that they had a one point four million dollar credit. Do you remember that conversation?
I remember them talking about, I brought my paperwork up, and last thing I remember here and that I can remember was they, they were supposed to pay us so much money going into next phase. And I think they were gonna do that in kind and do West Mountain Road.
Well, my, my concern in, in your spare time, maybe go back and look, where did they get a one point four million dollar credit?
I, on, on my RDA stuff, I have not seen a credit on that.
And that's my concern is that maybe this is something, a deal you guys made way back in the nineties or eighties or whatever, but I, I don't remember ever seeing a one point four million dollar credit.
I haven't seen it.
And they're gonna come back and want that, whether it's on West Mountain or S Bridge or wherever we act, ask for more help, I think that's gonna come back on us. So if you can find that documentation, or I'm gonna ask them for it if you can't.
I would ask them for it because I've, when this whole thing started a few months ago, I dug as deep as I could, and I.
Okay, so you've looked for it.
All I had was what the original RDA was for, there was engineering right away, all this stuff that they pitched in for, and that's all I have is what.
I think it was when they paved from the resort up to Tamarack Falls.
I thought too, I thought there was something connecting.
Some credit there or something, but I don't remember that much money.
Right.
I, it wasn't that much that I remember.
So we'll, we'll have to dig that one out when we get to that point, but just keep that in the back of your mind.
Okay.
They may come in and say, well, we're just gonna use our credit, and you guys do it anyway.
Yeah, I, I don't remember that. That might've been a meeting I wasn't here for, but I was here.
I think you were here.
I was here the last one that Turlington was here for.
Yeah, and Chris?
And Chris.
Well, Steve Millman brought it up.
Yeah.
Millman's got it in his stuff.
Who?
Steve Millman.
Oh, oh, maybe it was Steve that brought it up.
And Sendie may have that documentation.
Okay.
Then the last question I have is, have you found an architect yet for your facility on Goldus?
I had a couple of messages in right before I left on spring break, and I'm still, it's gonna take me a couple days to get caught up, but I got a couple more that I'm gonna call today. I'm just gonna take my rough drawings down and say this is what we're after, and I need a price.
Good, good. And I think there's a second steel building company now in Idaho, something like RKE or R, it's not RMT.
R and M? R and M's been around for.
No, this is not, I saw their ad next to R and M ad, and I thought, hmm, these guys are giving them competition, but. Um, my brother works at R and M, and he's like, I wouldn't buy anything right now because our steel is coming from China and it's not very good.
It's all, everything's just all over the place.
Yeah, it is.
Buy two two-by-fours side by side, and one's all twisted and cracked, and the other one's perfectly straight.
And half as much as the crooked one.
Yeah. I don't know how anybody can build a straight house right now, but.
Not easy.
Okay, any more questions for Jeff?
Not right now, let's catch up on Wednesday.
Nothing for us, then have a great day.
Sounds good, thank you.
Welcome back. No, no, we're not going into executive.
Oh, okay.
Uh, it's been canceled, so we're going down our agenda, Commissioner's discussion, we have the meeting minutes on March twenty-first, this is an action item. Did you get a chance to look at those?
I didn't see anything.
So you wanna make a motion to approve?
Move to approve the meeting minutes of March twenty-first?
I'll second that.
Move to second, in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. This is the one that Gabby was here, I think. And the last item on our agenda this morning is to sign the SF two seventy for the Forest Service RAC grant for, assuming this is for the drag final. I don't know if we have that paperwork, Doug.
I didn't see it.
Uh, yeah, it was in our.
It's in our packet, but I don't know if we have it printed.
I think it may have come separately.
This was for seven thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars if I'm reading it right.
Doesn't need letterhead, I can print it, Doug, but.
I just printed it off, the request for advance or reimbursement, is that the matter we're referring to?
Of the SF two seventy?
Yep.
Yep. That's exciting, we got money back.
We just need a motion to approve that, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, I'm reading this stuff.
I move that we approve and sign the SF two seventy for the Forest Service RAC grant.
I'll second that.
Move to second, in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, so whenever you get it done, I'll sign it. So at this time then, we're gonna recess for lunch, and we will see everyone back here at one o'clock.